...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wallace, can you read the statement of certification of the meeting?
Certification meeting has been advertised at 26 Sunshine Hall.
Please go ahead.
Mr. Benierak.
Here.
Mr. Zambri.
Here.
Mr. Nalbarada. Mr. Conti.
Here.
Mr. Walsh.
Here.
Mrs. Shaw.
Here.
Mr. Medichini.
Here.
Mr. Poggiella.
Here.
Mr. Agnello.
Here.
Mr. Ellis.
Here.
Mr. Dedum.
Here.
Mr. DiLorenzo.
Here.
Application before the Board, PB 2015-02, 520 Belleville Avenue. Former geriatric hospital proposes to develop and establish 245 residential units and retail space.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, my name is Paul Jemis, I represent the Attorney. The only problem I have is my witness is not here. Unless, he's not here, Mr. Bleeker is our witness that has to lead off everything. And maybe even the lady, because I know there's a lot of problems with traffic out there. So I apologize for the delay, if we can wait five minutes.
Sure.
We will try and see where it is.
No problem.
All right, thank you very much. Thanks, your patience. I'll be quick, because I've got a little delay. The Vayos family which owns the entity that owns the property.
Speaking of Mike's.
The Vayos family which owns the property, the LLC that operates, has been very successful. It's a family-owned business, it's done a lot of these conversions all over the place. They're very excited about doing it. We believe, I mean, the challenge here is to maintain the integrity and the historic nature of the building and its character while we're doing everything to turn what was a hospital into a residence. But we think that we can accomplish that and make it a part of the community and revitalize that part of the area. I know I've grown up in this since all my life, so I knew this when it was really happening and I knew it since it's been dormant. So with that, we also want to express my appreciation for the consultants, for the Board, and for the Pam. They've been very, very helpful, Ms. Green, Mr. Harris, and Mr. DiLorenzo, in giving us guidance on what we need to do and what the Pam might want. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Bleeker, John Bleeker, who is our architect and planner, as well as his developer title.
Sir, please raise your hand, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, and help you down?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name and address for the record.
John Bleeker, my business address is 275 Belmont Avenue, Hilton Group.
Next phone, Leslie, please.
B-L-E-E-K.
Thank you.
Now, would you recite credentials for the Board?
I'd be glad to. I completed my formal education in 1983. I graduated from NGIT with a Bachelor of Architecture degree and a minor in engineering. I currently have over 28 years' experience in the field of architecture, planning, and land surveying. I'm currently licensed as a registered planner, land surveyor, and a registered architect. In the state of New Jersey, I've been so since 1987. I testified in front of planning boards, boards of adjustments, over a few thousand times with applications similar to this and obviously smaller than this. Currently am the city county expert for, is an architect for the Destruction Board of Appeals. And have been so and chaired that board for approximately 12 years. Well, exceptional.
Thank you very much. You're familiar with this site plan, correct?
Yes, I am.
And you're the one who prepared the documents and orchestrated the presentation and submission to the Board of Planners, right?
Yes, I am.
Would you discuss the proposal that the Attorney had?
I'd be glad to. As the attorney has indicated, this is an existing building, which I know the Board is very, very familiar with. It's the old Essex County Geriatric Hospital. It's located on a number of streets, one being Belleville Avenue, as well as Carpenter Streets on the one side. It's basically 9.13 acres in size. It's now in the redevelopment area zoning district. And the property is located on the northwest corner of the South Franklin Avenue and Belleville Avenue. We have approximately 496 feet of frontage along the Carpenter Street. And as I indicated, the current hospital sits on that property. And there's an area in the back where it used to be the old helicopter pad, which occupies the re-imported site, which we would like to develop a little bit, as well as the building itself. Our proposal before you tonight is to re-convert this building, basically adaptively reuse the entire structure. We would like to take the old boiler room, re-convert it into a retail space, which is important to your redevelopment plan. And we would like to take the main building structure and convert that into 245 new residential units. So basically, that's the, the crux of the application. It's going to be a mixed-use project. It's going to be all contained within the existing building itself. We are asking on the interior of the existing building to extend. There's a three-story part of the building, most of the building is nine to almost 10 stories in height. We would like to extend the third-story section to actually two more, three more floors, so we can connect all the way through with a corridor system, which allows us to have ADA access throughout the whole building, which unfortunately currently it does not have. So other than that change in terms of the structure, everything's going to remain the same. We are going to take extensive measures to restore the whole building itself. The lobby of this building is really, really unique, it's very beautiful. We want to bring that back and preserve that, which is based in the main entrance. And what I'm showing you right now, my presentation is the front elevation. And this area is basically-
Why don't we mark that for identification? Just describe what you're marking.
A1?
A1, I would suggest. And A1 depicts?
A1 is actually a drawing inside our presentation, but this is really the front elevation of the building. This is just a color rendition of what it looks like.
That's the front, the side of it?
That's correct.
Okay.
You can't really read from the drawing, but in reality, as you'll see, as I'm pointing to the first main part, which is the main entrance of the building, that section is about two and a half stories in height. But that only goes up to that height. And then the main portion of the building is actually behind that, probably about 100 feet. And that building extends up to almost nine, almost nine and a half to 10 stories. The rest of the building itself, basically, is seven stories in height. And then on the interior, we're actually proposing that little addition, which you can't see from any of the façades. They try to bring it up to five stories, so we can actually have that circulation that I mentioned just before, all the way throughout the building, and connect all the ingress stairways, as well as provide handicap access to the hall.
That'll be shown, pardon for interrupting, and your plans when you get to your plans, right?
It's actually in the plans now, and it's part of your presentation.
This is going to be a little, it's a little bit challenging how this goes, because this building doesn't like the standard building. The way it was built, there's all kinds of levels, which might change, the basement is not a basement, and that sort of thing.
That's correct.
So you will bear with us as we go through it, we're going to try and make it as clear as we can.
Yeah, as the attorney's indicating, it's a very complex building. I don't know if anybody had the opportunity to be in that building and go through that building. It's very complex, it's very large, it's beautiful, but it has different facets with regards to floor levels. And I'll explain that as best I can, and if there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
John, if I can be brought to the meeting back, will you, so Mr. Walsh can sit, and we can see what's going on? I've got a feeling it's going to get tiresome, it's a little difficult.
Should I move the easel back?
Yes.
Is that better? So that's, that's the first drawing that I just want to present to you. Give you an overall picture of what we'd like to do. With regards to the facade, we're going to obviously restore all the windows. We're going to provide details to do that. We're also, you know, replacing the brick. A lot of the old precast material has deteriorated. We're going to be restoring that and putting that back on the facade. We don't want to take anything away from the existing facade at all. So we just want to preserve that, because the building is beautiful, and we've made a commitment to try to bring it back to life as best we can.
John, with regard to the windows, in terms of the air conditioning units that are going to be in these parking units and residential units, how are you doing that so that it maintains the integrity of those?
Well, we took a lot of detail, you know, that was very important. So what we've done is we actually decided to put in a heating plant that would actually service the whole building. It worked out more economical to do that, as well as more energy-efficient to do that. So we are going to have one main element that's actually going to heat the building. It'll probably be multi-areas, but basically we'll have mechanical rooms throughout, which will provide heating. When it comes to the air conditioning, we don't generally provide central air conditioning, we provide individually unit air conditioning. But we're going to do it in the windows themselves. And it's actually going to be just grills inside the window, which will be located at the bottom of each window. They'll be hardly visible from the exterior at all. We don't plan to cut any openings or any type of penetrations throughout the facade. We don't want to do anything like that. We would basically just preserve the window side itself, but at the very bottom, we would have a section that actually would be a louver, and that's all you would see from the outside. So when you look at the building from any distance, you're basically going to see the window open. It's a very nice, gentle way to provide the natural ventilation that we need through the air conditioning system, but also it doesn't have any impact visually from any standpoint from the facade, because you don't have these units that are sticking outside the building in sleeves or anything like that, that we felt would be very detrimental to the aesthetic of the building.
Thank you.
Next drawing I want to show you is basically a site plan drawing.
John, before you settle, can you mark that A2?
Site plan drawing shows basically, we have two main primary points of entry onto the site, and they are existing. We have one, which is on Belleville Avenue, which comes through here. The dark black line that you see on our site plan drawing, which basically is the perimeter of our property itself. As I indicated, it's 9.1 acres in size. This really limits the property dimensions for us, in terms of what we actually own. The access point from this property line back down to Belleville, unfortunately, is not ours. It's an access that's permitted. It was provided by, you know, when the hospital function. And obviously, it's an access that we still have. But it's really just through, I guess, the Great Lawn area, that would be going up to Belleville Avenue. The other access point is a similar situation with returns, with in terms of access. It actually comes from the property line from the other side, which is going to go out to Franklin Avenue. And this property access easement would be, is an existing driveway again, and that goes from Franklin onto our property. And this actually breaks and forks into two different directions. One goes to the south, would actually, would service our building. And the other would go, break to the north, and that services a new project, which has actually been developed. It's the, it's like a townhouse project just to the north of us. So both of those access points are primary access points, obviously, we're retaining those. And then anything within our property boundaries, we're going to improve and renovate to meet all the current codes, but also all the comments that we received from both your planner and your engineer. The area that's basically in yellow, and you'll see a lot of green trees that have been added to the plan, this is per comments of your planner and your engineering consultant. This also, this little circle area is the old helicopter pad that used to be on the site. We're going to preserve that, and we're going to make that basically a park area. And we're going to renovate that in a very, very nice fashion, where you can have benches, as well as landscaping all throughout. Majority of the property in the, in the area of paving around our property is pre-existing. But we are adding a section of area, which would be located closer to Carpenter Avenue, as some additional parking. We are adding a little parking to the north, and we're actually striping that. And we're adding just a small strip opposite, well, closest to Franklin Avenue for parking. But the rest of it, all the other paved areas are already pre-existing. We have designed parking in accordance to the redevelopment ordinance, and we feel that we're in compliance with that. Actually, we have more parking than your ordinance even calls for. But I think I'd rather, with regards to parking, defer to our traffic engineer, which he can give you more detail on that if you'd like. So this is how we're going to develop the site. The main entrance, which I showed you in elevation before, is the area I'm pointing to now. That is closest to Belleville Avenue. And the, basically, the building spans out from that point as you go into the interior, to both sides. And the areas that I was indicating we're going to add additions to is just these two small sections, which are located in the very center of the building, in the back of the building, and are really not visible from any point because of the existing structure, the building itself. Around that is all higher, so you really wouldn't be able to see those additions. Next drawing I'd like to show you is basically, I'll mark this A3.
Thank you very much.
And this, this is a series of three different floor plans. It shows you the first floor plan, which is on the left side of the sheet in the middle. Then you have the second floor plan, and you have the third floor plan. The primary elements of the first floor plan is, you'll see this area that I'm pointing to at the, basically, the left side of that drawing to the top of the sheet. That is the old bodega. That was the old mechanical space of the existing building. That area is what we would like to develop with approximately 50, 500 square feet of retail space. But we're going to use it as a convenience store and a laundry. And it's our intention that both of those areas would not be used, it'll be for a residence use only. And they are going to be located within that. Basically, it's a one-story structure that's added to the existing main building part. And it's very low, and that area would be the retail area.
The applicant is agreeing that a condition of this, even though we can do, the gap, we can do 7,500 square feet, the applicant has decided to do 5,500. And both the laundromat and the convenience store are only going to service the building. So that, for instance, in the laundromat, you'll hear a testimony that in order to get into it, you need to have hard as tenant in order to be able to get to it. And the same, a convenience store would be different, but it's only accessed for tenants of the building, or visitors that might come in. So it's not going to be to the general public. I'm sorry, I wanted to make sure that was clear.
No, that's fine. So basically, that area that we've indicated, as Mr. Jemis has indicated, the redevelopment ordinance does call, or it allowed for 7, up to 7,500 square feet of retail space. We are providing with this plan at this time, 5,500 square feet. The second floor plan, this is located in the center of the sheet, and it basically shows you what is really the internal main corridor system of the existing building. And actually, the building laid out very, very well, where we were able to retain the corridor location in the center and then provide units on both sides, which allowed us to get to, you know, beat the light and air requirements for all the windows and for all the ingress windows that are required for the new apartments that would actually be developed. So the building, because of the shape of it, actually is very conducive to this type of renovation and adaptive reuse. We do have an interior area in the center that you will see, and it'll be redundant on every floor plan. And that area in the center is basically an open-air court that's actually part of the existing structure. So we are going to be able to have windows on this whole outside perimeter, where you also have, you are have the ability to have windows on the inside perimeter as well, because of that court design, which is inherent with the existing structure. The other floor plan, which is all the way on the right side of the sheet, is the third floor plan. And just something that I'd like to note, and I can explain in a little more detail, but I'm sure the Board probably can grasp what I'm trying to present. This information, you'll see that we have, the apartments are designated as a dark brown, basically, graphic symbol for where the units are. But you'll see areas that are white, and those areas are not apartments, that is actually the main lobby itself. And you'll see that the main lobby itself is really, the entrance of that is really at the second floor level of the rest of the building behind it. All right, so that's really the first floor, coming, you know, from the main entrance. But in reality, it's the same elevation, or just slightly different in elevation of the second floor. That's why we showed on the second floor plan. But there's not going to be any units on that area. And as you get to the third floor, you'll see there's units here, but then there's no units there, because that is basically a roof area. And you'll see changes on each plan depending on the way the existing building is arranged. So as I said, it's a fairly complex system of, you know, circulation, but we are able to get ADA-compliant to almost all the units throughout the whole building. The only thing that we wouldn't get ADA-compliant access to, and we don't really want to present that, is the main entrance, which is just really the lobby area itself, and just an administrative office. We don't want to really modify the existing structure and start putting in some significant handicap ramps or an elevator. And I've handled a lot of historic buildings, and we've handled applications for them, as well as presented them to construction boards, yeah, as well as construction officials for approval. And you are about some leniency when you're preserving the existing historic character of the building itself with that regard. But any of the other units throughout the building are all filling up to, you know, ADA-compliant standards, and they will be designed and built that way throughout the whole building.
John, when we were discussing a matter with Ms. Green, she indicated about the four residential units located on the main foyer portion of the building. Can you discuss those and whether or not they're, because as your conclusion was they're not located in the basement, but I want to make sure the point is clear.
Yeah, as I indicated just a little earlier, the second floor plan, the floor plan of the lobby, the main entrance, is basically closest to the second floor. That's why we show it graphically on the second floor plan. So when you're looking at the units below that, they are below that. And technically, you know, they're, they're basically, the problem is they're about 10 feet lower than the existing main entrance. But that is basically almost six feet higher than the basement floor level, when it finally finishes out in terms of elevation. So it's not really part of the basement. It's actually a different level all to itself, and it's higher than the basement area. And I know we had discussed this with Ms. Green, and, you know, we did indicate that we would like to put units in that area, because we do have plenty of space. And I do believe your redevelopment ordinance addresses that adequately, in saying that we are able to provide the units underneath the main floor area, but we're not able to provide any units in the basement area itself. And our proposal before you tonight is not to show any units at all within the basement area. We only are proposing those units underneath the main lobby area. Next drawing I'd like to present to you is basically the conclusion of the floor plans.
That'll be A4, John.
That's correct. And this drawing shows again, a series of three floor plans, and it shows the fourth floor plan. It shows the fifth floor plan, but it shows also the sixth and seventh floor plan, which are basically identical. So that's why we indicated them both the same. And as you can see, the addition that we would like to propose basically occurs from the third floor to the fifth, and that would be just in this area here, in this area here. And the reason why we'd like to do that is so we can have the connecting corridor go all the way around, so we can provide proper, you know, access to all the emergency exits, which are actually very conveniently located on all the corners where they should be of the building itself, as well as the corridor systems. There's no dead-end corridor situations that would be created with this design if we are able to put that addition in, and we can run all the way through. Also, we have multiple elevator banks, and those elevator banks are again located in the existing locations. And I'm pointing to them now. And they are adequate in terms of the location and the amount of residents that we would serve. And I'd just like to also add to the Board's benefit is, if this is developed as we proposed with residential uses, the occupancy would be reduced compared to what the hospital function actually used to be. So we're not expecting the same, actually, less occupants would actually occupy this building as it would if it was used as a hospital, in terms of the code. The fifth floor plan, you can see that we only have a series of single units around the court. We don't have any units around the outside perimeter, because that's the way the existing structure is now. So we only utilize what we could in that area. And then, as you get up to the upper floors, you'll picture the, you know, areas that are white, which are the roof areas below. And we only have actually units in the front wing of the building, and that will go up from the sixth and seventh floors.
John, would you, can I direct your attention to the fifth floor and a comment that was made with regard to terraces and railing? Or is that something you want to show on another, another plan?
If you want to, I can address that.
If you would be kind enough to do that.
Which, which comment you?
This is comment nine on Ms. Green's submission. It says the plan states you need 42 inch high railing from, and you designate where it's from, and I'm trying to illustrate that in subsequent plan.
Well, the building itself has a complete parapet all the way around the perimeter. That is part of the problems that we had to address right away, because of neglect and actually no non-use of the building. It suffered a lot of water damage, and those are the areas that, you know, we have to restore almost immediately. But the perimeter parapet varies between three and four feet in height. But we're proposing, based upon Ms. Green's comments, basically a fence three feet off of that parapet, to actually go up on the roof terrace areas. And that'll, that'll be a protective fence, that'll be three feet away from the parapet itself, that won't be visible from the ground at all, because it's going to be set back so far, and because the existing parapet is high enough. So it's only something that you would actually be able to see if you're actually on the roof terrace itself. So that, that is our proposal with this application.
One of the other comments that the screen made was about the skylights and preservation of the skylights on the first floor. Can you address that?
I forgot to, yeah, I mean, with these, our plan is absolutely to restore the whole building itself. And there's some beautiful features within the main lobby area. You know, there's all marble tile floor, which has been, you know, deteriorated to a certain extent. But we want to, you know, restore that completely. Also, the walls have some granite, as well as marble on it. We want to restore that whole main entrance. And there's skylights that are there as well, which are above that area. And we obviously want to preserve those as best we possibly can. And we are going to restore them to its natural state, you know. I don't know if we'll, it had, you know, there was lead inside the glazing, you know, I don't think we're going to go to that extent, but we are going to restore it to the same look that it had before.
Thank you.
Okay, basically, what I've done is, and I do appreciate both the planner's comments, as well as your engineer's comments, we have revised the drawings. I know they're not before you right now, but I do have them with me. I don't know if you, Ms. Jemis, you want to present this? You know, we have the, all the drawings that have been revised based upon the comments.
Well, let's mark those drawings. What I would suggest is that we mark, with your permission, A4, seeing the drawings that were submitted to the Board. So A5, thank you. So the site plans that were prepared by Mr. Bleeker would be A5. If you could just describe those, John, and how many pages they were and what they've been revised.
Well, this is basically a full set of drawings. It's a similar, almost like, you know, it's identical to the same count that you've had, except for we're returning the services of a landscape architect that's gone over all these comments in detail. You also have, we have a engineer that has been brought on board with regards to storm drainage system. And those drawings were added into the sets, which you should have. What we have, what I'm presenting to you right now is basically the same drawings, other than the ones I just mentioned, but they've been revised based upon the latest comments.
Let's just be clear, the drawings that we're marking, we're marking for A5 are the drawings that you prepared that were submitted in conjunction with the application.
That's correct.
What I suggest we do is mark for A6, those drawings that are before you with the modifications that you mentioned, with the further understanding that those have not been reviewed by Mr. Harris or Ms. Green.
That is correct.
Or have not been submitted to the Board.
That is correct.
With your permission, Mr. Chairman, we'll look at that.
Exhibit A6, home food and pedal sheet, for drawing S U M 1 0. Exhibit A6, whole food pedal sheet, drawing S U F one zero, S P dash one zero, S P dash two zero, S P dash three zero, S P dash three point one, zero one, S P dash three point zero two, S P dash four point zero, S P dash five point zero, S P dash six point zero, S P dash six point zero one, S P seven point zero, S P eight point zero, drawing A dash one point zero, drawing A dash two point zero, drawing A dash three point zero, drawing A dash four point zero, five, five zero point zero, A seven point zero, A eight point zero, A nine point zero, A ten point zero, A eleven point zero. That'll be the entire set.
John, do you have a set of those here?
Yes, I do.
It's up to you, Mr. Chairman, when you lay the, the figure, not that you're going to review them right now, but, or we'll just keep them over there and give them out afterwards?
We can't review them, so I think just keep them on the side.
Would I like to give Mr. Harrison one? That's okay? So, Johnson, what you're explaining is that A point, A6, no, we're going to hold it until the end. And A6, what have been added to those drawings are items that we've done as a result of the comments of Mr. Harrison and Ms. Green in order to address their issues and make sure that we can demonstrate how they're being compliant. Is that correct? In terms of the trash and recyclable materials, can you explain how those are going to work?
Actually, your redevelopment ordinance has a provision with regards to trash and recyclable areas, and one of the provisions is that the trash or the recyclables are not to be restored outdoors, and we don't plan to do that. We actually are going to be locating all that in the basement level. In the presentation plan that I've just indicated as exhibit A6, there's a basement plan that shows a full delineation of the existing structure that's down there. It shows an area that we're going to utilize for trash recyclable areas as well as areas that will be used for, you know, general maintenance. So there's not going to be any other uses down there in that basement area, even though the basement is fairly extensive, so we have plenty of room to store the recyclables there as well as the, the trash throughout the building. Just outside that area, which is indicated on the site plan, is an area that was originally designated as parking stalls, but your planner has indicated to us that, you know, that would become possibly troublesome if there was parking in that area and there was loading that had to be done for the trash that was actually in the interior of the building, and we agreed, so we actually eliminated the parking in that, in those areas on the site plan drawing, and we provided a loading area for the trash to be pulled up. Even though we don't feel that the loading of trash or recyclables is actually going to occur during certain areas when necessarily they would be parking, we've obviously been scheduled that to a certain extent, we've completely eliminated parking from that area altogether. So there'll be unlimited access into the recyclable as well as the, you know, the trash, and that would actually have to be rolled outside the building, basically where the old loading area was on the existing structure, and that would have to be then loaded onto the trucks to be taken away. Everything would be handled with private collection throughout, you know, for this building.
In terms of, there's a gym in the facility, correct?
Excuse me?
Gym?
Yes, there is.
Is that gym about sixteen hundred square feet?
Four square feet.
And that's restricted just to the residents?
That is correct.
Of, of, can you explain where the gym is and how, how you access?
The gym area is actually going to be on exhibit A6, drawing A dash eleven point zero.
Can you put that up on display? Is that, is there a way to do that?
I could.
Okay, someone hold it for you. Why don't you put it on this, this screen?
This drawing is actually the basement drawing itself, and the area that I indicated where trash recyclable are right over in this area, in the area here, would actually be located for the sixteen hundred square foot fitness center, gym, whatever you want to call it, but it would just be utilized for the residents themselves. That would have the access to elevator access or stairwell access down to the basement level, and then it would have access to the gym itself. This whole facade that's at the back of the area is actually at grade level, so it's, the basement is not submerged at all in that area, so there's windows there, there's also loading doors there, and that's why we can have access directly to the exterior from that point. As you go closer to the Belvo Avenue, obviously the building gets, you know, more and more submerged, you know, because of the existing grades.
Thank you. Can you talk about the walkways and the connections of the walkways that were on the screen, the comments that we discussed in the prior talk? Are you talking about the sidewalks in particular?
Yeah, we've, we've provided, we've been able to provide just about all the, you know, the sidewalk areas and pavement areas that have been indicated on the planning, planner's report. The only thing that we obviously could not provide is the sidewalk area that extends beyond our property boundaries. So we have added complete access from the building itself directly down to Carpenter Avenue, and we provided access along on our property, Carpenter Avenue basically parallel to the street, but then it does connect into the existing sidewalk, which is off our property, which continues all the way down to Belvo Avenue. So we, I do believe we've adequately addressed, you know, the concern of the planner, which were, you know, good concerns to connect the sidewalk system that's there now with our building, and we do, you know, plan to do that. We have modified the latest drawings to show those details with more clarity.
John, does it connect all the way to Belvo Avenue, or does it get near it?
No, our, our stops at our property boundary, but the rest of the sidewalk does continue. So it does connect to Belvo.
I have a shaking in the negative over here that, you know, when I'm home with my wife, that you shouldn't even sound. Well, if we could ask Mr. Chairman from the screen to just give us a comment about it so that we can address it here, would that be acceptable?
Sure. I guess the drawing shows that it does not connect, right?
Correct. I have to say, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
Yes, I say your name and slay the lesson.
Darlene A. Green, G R E N, our planner with me as your consulting.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The sidewalk, as shown in the picture, does not, it goes past the former superintendent's house, but then it terminates at the end of the superintendent's house. So what I said in my review letter is that if they want to do this, which they're not mandated to bring the sidewalk down, they're only mandated to bring a crosswalk across to Carpenter because there is a sidewalk on the opposite side of Carpenter that goes the whole way down to the intersection. And why this is important is because we have bus stops down there. So if we've got residents, we want to ensure they're safely on the sidewalk. So the two options available to them is to forget the whole sidewalk down the edge of your property and just bring a crosswalk straight across Carpenter at the end of the driveway, or they can bring a crosswalk at the superintendent's cottage where it terminates across the street. It's up to the acting. As long as we get them, the pedestrians safely across Carpenter to a sidewalk, that's all that matters. So there's two options. And that can be a condition of approval.
You want, we'll agree to the condition.
Yeah, we don't have any prob, I mean, I thought that sidewalk extended all the way down, but obviously terminates somewhat halfway or beyond halfway to the property. But that's okay. We do show a crosswalk on the revised site plan that shows it going across Carpenter Avenue to connect this, as Ms. Green has indicated. So it would connect not only to the sidewalk system that's there along Carpenter, but it'll also connect to the sidewalk opposite side of the Carpenter Street, which will obviously continue all the way down. It's true, I, I just saw that sidewalk going that way. I mean, it looked like it went all the way down to Belvo Avenue, but apparently it might, there might be a small section that's missed.
So the applicant will agree to any condition that, to the conditions that stated by Ms. Green in order to be able to make sure that there's pedestrians.
That's correct.
In terms of lighting, John, would you address what kind of lighting there is on the grounds in terms of nature and color of the poles and that?
Other than that. Within your presentation, but also the exhibit A6, we have provided a full lighting plan, and it's one of the S P drawings. S P seven point zero.
Put that up on that, so you can, you can do that.
What we've did is we've taken the existing building as well as the existing paved area, and we've designed a lighting system that actually encompassed the whole site, even though so many existing areas do not have lighting the way the existing building was. So we've provided the minimum footprint level that's required in terms of your ordinance and redevelopment ordinance with regards to the paved areas as well as drive areas. We are proposing to have pole mounts, which will be on the interior of some of the aisles, and those pole mounts will be eighteen feet in height. They would also be dark bronze color. They would be of a historic kind of a design, almost like an old world design, and they would be down shielded in the, in the design as well as the function of the light fixture itself, so they wouldn't be shining any light onto the surrounding properties. They would only be shining light directly downward and only illuminate the areas that are required to illuminate, which is the driveway areas as well as the parking areas as required.
And why you have that up, it might deserve a purpose. In terms of the signage that Mr. Harrison and Ms. Green might have suggested in terms of traffic control and that sort of stuff, we'll agree to with those recommendations.
Absolutely. Yeah, we, you know, I don't think we've had reception to any of those requirements.
At this time, no further questions.
Would you rather go through all your notices or?
It's your pleasure. If you want to.
Why, leave it up here. Does any members have any questions that I can ask?
I have one question was if you could clarify about the basement. I'm a little unsure about that. The four units that are in the basement, do they have full windows and a full door access? They won't have to upstairs to exit?
That's correct. That's correct. Yeah, what happens is that level is basically six feet higher than the basement floor level, and the, if you remember what I was doing on my testimony, the main lobby is actually closest to the second floor, so that means that whole area is raised underneath it. And that's, there's like only four steps, five steps to go downward into that area from the outside grade. So we have legitimate windows on the whole perimeter of that area as well, so it doesn't even look like a basement, it doesn't feel like a basement. It's not even located in the true basement area.
So if I could follow up on your question, if I'm coming out of one of those units and want to get to the outside, how do I do that?
Well, you can go down, you can go actually up to the, the level above you, which would be the first floor level, which would be only less than half a flight in steps. Or you can go directly up a set of stairs to go outside to the grade, you know, from the existing access that's already there now. So you have plenty of.
And that's set a series to go to the outside? If I could, Mr. Chairman, how, is that, how many steps, you know, to walk worth?
It's, it's approximately five steps.
And if, is there access from the back of the building to the basement units?
There, there actually is, yeah. The actually, the access from the back of the building is at grade. So we have loading dock, loading doors and loading docks that's in the existing building now that you could actually walk right into, so.
That's my question. If you access it from the rear, you wouldn't have to go down any stairs?
That's correct. Yeah, now, the other option from that lobby area, that's, you know, where we have the units, you could actually go downward as well, down into the basement and then exit right at grade at the far end of the building as well. So there's, there's like, you've got three different options. You can go downward, or you can go half a flight up to the main floor level, or you can go directly to the outside grade on the sides. And that, that's all exact access that's already been provided within the building itself. So we're going to be, but this whole area of the basement, which is shown on, you know, the drawing I'm indicating, which is A eleven, this is all completely exposed at a grade. That's a daylight situation. But as we go further up, the grade goes up slightly.
Okay, I got a couple of questions for you in the basement. Old boiler room, assuming this will be demolished and taken out.
Well, the old boiler room.
Should, is that in?
Well, the old boiler room.
That's in that area here.
It's in this area here, but it's above this, and that's going to be used for the retail space, that ground floor.
The question I have, are you getting rid of the boiler?
The boiler itself, yes.
Right, the boilers, heating in the, for the whole facility. Are they going to go with air conditioning zone line heating, the heat pumps for each apartment?
That's what we, that's exactly.
Now, a question that I think other members may have, and going to try to clarify. On your garbage and trash, I'm assuming you're going to be having compactors, trash compactors to store away your garbage and give it to a pickup?
That, yeah, well, we have, you know, we have a whole area that we've indicated is trash here, you know.
Are they going to have compactors inside where there's actual trash?
I'm being told by the, yes.
Yeah, that's, that's what I want to know. Any open trash in a dumpster in the basement that rolls out, actually being a compactor, which will compact it for pickup?
Yeah, I mean, these will be all stored in closed containers, if that's what you consider.
Yeah, that's right. Last question I have is per your units and apartments, I'm assuming it's also sprinklerized. All the units will still be sprinkler?
Absolutely. Yeah, actually, we, we are going to be designing the building completely.
It didn't show in these plans, which I don't have a cattle.
They're not constructive plans.
Right, I, I know. I just wanted to ask a couple of these guys.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. You're absolutely right. I mean, the whole building is going to be a hundred percent completely sprinkler from the basement level up. Any area that's, that's required in NFPA standards is actually going to be adhered to. Those plans will be designed in detail and then given to Mr. D. So if your board's, you know, approves this, right?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
The, your exterior door access, our planner, he raised a question as to whether the main exterior doors were at grade level or below grade level, and I believe it was clear in the plan, and were at the exterior doors.
I made.
Yeah, I just, yeah, thank you. I, it's, I don't mean on the screen in four, which the, and that's basically exactly what we were kind of talking about with the apartments just below the lobby level. So basically, the comment is that the exterior access doors are illustrated on the east and west side of the lobby area in the floor plan. The doors are shown below grade in the basement level, while the floor plan is illustrating the doors on the first floor. The drawing is actually correct with what the situation is, but again, this is a very complex structure, and it's not, you know, hard to, to, you know, get that situation and interpret it two different ways. But the reality of it is, the stairs are at grade level and on where the, like terrace areas are on the sides of the building. And you would actually go down approximately five steps and then go down to that level where the new apartments would be. So, so the drawing does show it properly on the right diagrammatic plan, but you're actually going downward, all right, to that main level. So I think that hopefully clarifies it. We've indicated some additional locations on exhibit A6, which is the new presentation drawing, so that, you know, you would have the benefit.
Why don't you show us, John, if you're quite right here? Why don't you show us John, if you'll clarify you.
On drawing A4 of our presentation, you'll see the two stairway.
John, if you might display it. Board doesn't have that. It might not have that exactly.
The areas that we talked about, Commissioner, are these two locations here. That's the both sides of the building, the east-west side. And you'll see that there's a door at the facade entrance. And then there's these stairs that are indicated on the sides. Those stairs actually go downward to actually service the units that are, you know, underneath the main lobby area.
So the access doors are?
The access doors are basically, they're right here. You know, and then you obviously have this, you also have access from a stairway from those units back up to the main level, which is the, you know, the level that we're showing, which is based to the first floor plan.
So where the stores are, where the doors are located, then you have the option of going down the stairs or up the stairs? That means, are you telling me that, so the doors are at grade level?
The doors are below, the access doors are below grade level by about three and a half feet.
So you have to go, go down steps.
Correct.
To the doors within the structure.
That's correct.
So, and your ADA parking is located where?
Well, we have it designated on the site plan. It's all in compliance of, not only ADA standards, but also, I'll show you. I mean, they're closer to the elevator access points of the building itself. It's shown on multiple drawings. What I'm going to do is, I think the chair's drawing is SP3, has less, least information on it that shows them. So I'll indicate that as reference. And you can see the. I'll show it. We actually have, there's four designated handicap spots on this location, as I've indicated here. And I'm pointing to, which is closest to Carpenter Avenue. You have additional handicap, two additional handicap spots located towards where the park, the new park we're going to develop. And you have additional handicap spots on the opposite side of the building, which are located, you know, opposite the Carpenter Avenue.
What's the total of the ADA spot?
Well, we have four here, two, six. We have eight shown graphically on the drawing.
So are we making the assumption that here will only be eight, as eight residential units that will have people who require ADA parking? After 245 units?
No, I mean, we're, I'm not making any assumptions.
Well, I know, that's why I'm asking, because I'm not trying to give you a rough time, but I've been reading the planner's comments and Mr. Harris' comments. And I, I don't want you, I'm not, I'm not trying to argue, but I'm saying to myself, you've got 245 units, assuming that there was only one single person living in the unit, in each unit, which you won't, because we've got 200 units as well. And on top of that, we do have, we do have egress and access with some stairs. And certainly, this is a very attractive plan. And we would hope that we would have some stability when people live here, that they're not going to move out.
Thanks for coming by.
So that people might have physical challenges. And out of 245 units, and that doesn't just count for units besides the number of bedrooms we would have, I'm saying eight out of 245 units is exceptionally, it might, it might fulfill the minimum requirement, but for residential units, it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't even address 5% of the potential units that might need ADA parking. Got it?
I completely understand.
Thank you, Commissioner. We're going to have, Mr. Steiger's going to be here with our traffic expert. He's going to, I would think, address those issues in our compliance with applicable laws.
I understand, I understand that your eight is in compliance.
Well, it might be more than eight. I would wait to see.
All right, well, I'm ready. That's three to my eye. So that's, I'm not, do you understand where my logic is coming from? If you, you want people to live here, and this is a, is a very attractive project and the historical preservation, I, I don't disagree with that. I think that that's very important.
Arlene.
But you understand where I'm coming from.
Arlene, we can't put a condition on to make it more because by code, they have to do, we can't supersede the code.
But what I'd like to do is speak to Mr. Steiger when he arrives to address your issue and see if we can accommodate what you're looking for.
Yes, because I've seen, I've seen other developments where they've certainly made more accommodations. The other question I've had is in regard to pedestrian traffic, are we assuming that all pedestrian traffic will exit onto Carpenter?
No, I mean, it's just that, you know, as I indicated before, that's the only area we can really provide sidewalks to. All right, because we have access easements by driveways through the other sections of the property, walking going off our property to close Franklin and Belvo Avenue. We can't, I can't put a sidewalk here, unfortunately. I wish we could, but we can't. So what we can do is just, as Ms. Green has indicated and we've indicated on our plan, we will provide access, pedestrian access directly to Carpenter Street. And then you will provide a crosswalk across Carpenter's, which would allow people to have a sidewalk access all the way down to Belvo Avenue, which is where the mass transit.
Because people can walk to that.
You could walk down the driveways. You can.
I understand.
But I can't do anything additional. I wish I could.
I, I, I understand the technicalities of the sidewalk, but I'm glad that it was brought up by the planner or by Mr. Harris regarding the sidewalks, because we can't make the assumption that there wouldn't be any children residing in the unit. And there's school directly across the street on Bellville and Franklin. So as regarding the district, the school that the kids would attend, they would go to that school. So I have to raise that for the record about my concern regarding pedestrian traffic for children as well as those going to the bus stop, because certainly we would want commuters going into, into more urban areas to reside here.
Absolutely. Thank you, Professor.
Also, I'm concerned, there's a school. There's a, there's a special ed school behind your son. Will the, how will the driveways and the parking affect access to that, that building? School buses have to go get back to that site?
I'm going to suggest that we await Mr. Steiger's testimony because he's really the expert. And Mr. Bleecker might charge more money if he gets testimony.
Sorry. And will, and so the other part of the question I would have off of Franklin, I'll reserve that then for the. Okay.
Thanks, everyone.
I have a question, right? I have one question. You said that the laundromat would be just for people in the building.
That's correct.
So is there access from out, an exterior door to that?
I don't know, I don't know about that, but you can't get in without a, without a swipe card.
And so now, what about the convenience store? Would that also have a swipe card to get in?
No, no, that's just, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, it's a good question, Commissioner. But basically, you know, the building and as the property is nine acres in size, if you're on one side of the building and you're coming down an elevator, you might have to, you might take your car. You know what I mean? Get to the other side, especially with a load of laundry. So you, we do have outside access to that. But that would be controlled access. The convenience store is going to be handled a little bit different. It wouldn't be controlled access. You can come and go if you please. But that's located near the laundry area. And we're hoping that people are at the laundry and we, you know, pick up last minute things.
And there's parking spots by there?
There absolutely is. And just one general comment I'd like to say about the parking and with regards to the handicap question that was just raised as well. We have more parking than we require. So if there's small adjustments that the board sees necessary, I'm sure we can accommodate that. Okay?
Chair? A few items. Will you talk to us about the courtyard? What's at the bottom? Is there any access? What's the drainage? Is it going to be put to be in communal use?
At this time, the court, you mean the court on the interior of the building? It's there now. I mean, that's going to be used. It's not going to, we don't have access provided towards that because we have a lot of outdoor recreation space. And we have outdoor recreation space in elevated courts of the existing building that we're going to completely renovate.
What's the courtyard?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
What's the floor of the courtyard?
The two exterior courtyards?
No, the one that's enclosed.
That goes down to basement level. That goes down to basement level. There is, we are providing a door from basement level just for maintenance reasons. That's it.
And there's drainage for melting snow and rain?
There are existing drainage, yes. And we will provide, you know, I mean, I will do a full evaluation of that when we're actually doing the construction drawings, but we will provide more maintenance drainage if, if the existing drainage is for some reason damaged or insufficient.
Okay. Your basement shows tenant storage?
Some storage areas, yes.
Some storage areas. I count roughly forty compartments, but you have 245 units.
That's correct. Well, we've designated those because they can be broken down into smaller divisions depending what's necessary. But based upon our experience of units of this size, which my client has many units similar to this and even in more quantity, this should be adequate. But if, if storage here, that we were showing here is at approximately 12 feet by almost 24 feet, which is very big. So if somebody wants to have that space or rent that space from us, they have the ability to do that. But if they needed to be like a six by six area, we could obviously divide that into smaller spaces as leasing is managed.
So the tenants have too long requests and that's.
The units are generously designed. So we have a lot of interior space that I think that you'll find if you look at the plan in detail. It's sort of very, very nicely designed and they're adequately sized. And they're actually quite generous in size. So therefore, we don't feel there's going to be a super need for the storage, but we are providing storage for them in the basement area if this.
Okay. And how many two-bedroom apartments with dens or offices?
That is indicated directly on the drawings. So I'll give you that answer. Just two units would actually have two bedrooms and dens.
Just two units?
That's two, two units. And that's because of the physical size and the way it's located on the building itself.
Because Ms. Green also suggested that you show us a copy of a lease showing that the den would not be used as a third bedroom, I guess?
Well, we would stipulate that.
That would be a condition we'll provide.
Okay. How would you enforce that? How would you enforce that?
How, we would, how, the application, it would be in the lease.
Yes, but how would you enforce that and besides?
My business says that the only occupants of this is the tenant of the den. And so therefore, if the den were to be used, my, certain actions would be taken to enforce that in the court if they had to.
But how would you find out about?
As Mr. Huyotes there, and that's Katharina Huyotes's daughter, I've watched them operate their buildings. If you try and sneak into that building, you're in a lot of trouble. No, I'm being facetious, but they are very, 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 very attentive to their, to their programs. And my, how many units do you guys have?
I think over, over 12,000.
Over 12,000 units between New York and New Jersey. They, I've watched them do it. I've watched what happens when people donate here. And they're very quick about enforcing. Because if something goes wrong there, it affects a lot of other people. So that, to the extent a construction company can do something, but we, they're very attentive about it and will agree to it as a condition that those units will have leases that include not using the den or any other reason than a den.
Thank you. I just have a few questions. Do you have a, they'll have a living scrutinous there?
Yes. Yes.
Describe how the, I understand where you store the garbage, but how does a resident get their garbage down, down there?
There'll be, there's actually going to be.
Are there chutes or?
There are going to be chutes. There are going to be three garbage chutes. Then they're going to go directly down into the basement level. And that'll be, right, they would feed right into, you know, compacted locations right at that spot. Right, but there's going to be, you know, like I said, there's three distinct locations where we would, we have chutes that would be designed for the garbage to be taken away.
Regarding these access easements on these driveways, you know, I've got this beautiful project. You can tell them you can't touch these access driveways. Have you read the deeds? And what's the deed site? I mean, they're, they're in this condition. So you've got this beautiful building and then you get, it's not the yellow brick road. You get up there, believe me.
Yes, I understand. The only thing that we were able to do is only require it because Mr. Huyotes required it at an auction, is that the county needed the township easement that we, that the township needed for access. We understand that it's, it's a, it's a record of like description where entirely used. There's not been any issue in all the years that I know with any access through those sites.
No, no, I understand that. But what about the maintenance of it? There's, do you call out the, the book of pages? Does it say that the owner of the hospital can also, has to maintain them?
Mr. Harris, I can't give you the answer, but I will.
Because the sidewalk that leads to the, you know, I would like this to be pedestrian friendly too, but the sidewalk that leads from the building down to Bellville Avenue, Franklin Avenue are horrendous.
Well, in the conversation I had with my client, because Ms. Green and I think we raised it, they indicated that they would play the approach wherever has the rights to it. We don't have the right to maintain it.
Good luck with that. I hope you have that, I hope you.
We'll do the best we can. I mean, we're trying to make improvements to someone else's property. Thankfully.
Yeah, but I mean, I'd really like to go through those deeds.
I'll be glad to do them with you. I wasn't able to do them. So some of those things where you buy, you know, party of the first part to the party of the second part to the party, I've got to go through it. I tried to scan it today, but.
Okay. Because whoever's subdivided this process, you know, subdivided this property, had your head examined personally. It is what it is. And the last thing is, is all the parking areas, are they all going to be built and repaid? So at the end of the, I mean, at the end of the projects, is at least what's in your property, you know, totally?
Yes, we're going to do that.
Okay, so it will be all repaved and then there's striping. So all we have to do is work out these access easements. Okay, I, I really like to go through them. Because there's got to be, there's got to be an out to this thing so we can make this right.
I'm assuming there'll be security cameras surrounding the building on each floor too?
Absolutely. Absolutely. There'll be monitor at the super's apartment, you know, as well. So, yeah, that's, that's standard on my client's...
Very nice.
Where will the super's apartment be located?
Well, I, I mean, we really haven't designated super's apartment yet. I mean, that's really going to be, you know, my client's going to designate that when they need it. But there's an office that's provided in the main lobby and that's where the cameras will all be stationed, not in, not in his individual apartment.
Will you have a doorman or type situation when people enter? Will that be like any lock doors or...?
Everything's going to be a security system, you know, like access, you know, into the building itself. So it'll be either card access or, you know, key access. That's going to actually control it. There'll be a super's office, which will be in the main lobby area, but that's really, you know, what's, what would take care of the security. But obviously, we would have cameras at all the main entrance points, which would show back at that security office. And that would all be controlled by, you know, videotape as well. God forbid if anything did happen, we could definitely, you know, see what happened right away and then make the correction for it. So this, this, you know, this building is going to be, you know, completely under surveillance throughout the perimeter as well as the interior of the structure, the common area.
Ms. Green, our planner has also paid a significant attention to landscaping and I, I see that there were a lot of recommendations as far as stabilization of turf grass, protective fences, and actually in the parking area because certainly, you know, we, we are concerned about runoff to drainage. And so it's simply not just simply an aesthetic.
Sure, we have, we have, the next witness will be on drainage and the next witness after that will be on landscape architecture.
Okay. That's, that's great. Your square footage on your gym?
Sixteen hundred and nine street.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think we'll take a five-minute recess, a short recess, give our sonata for a break. Does any of the, the board have any more questions of this witness? Do we have any more testimony?
No, Mr. Chairman, I would suggest that the board's practice that if anybody in the public has any questions of Mr. Gleecker, that they ask him now.
At this time, we'll open it up to the public. Does anybody in the public have any questions of this witness?
Steve? D. Hang, live at one and two Carpenter Terrace. I want to first follow up. Arlene said something about the sidewalk on Carpenter Street or Terrace, not Avenue. I didn't understand that. Are you going to put in sidewalks on the right-hand side continued past Dr. Ford's house?
We're going to put sidewalks to the limit of our property and we're going to connect into the sidewalk from, I guess, is it Dr. Ford's, you said?
Well, that was the original guy that...
Okay, so from his prop, or from that property going towards Bellevue Avenue, we'll connect into that, but as Arlene just pointed out...
Okay, they have a sidewalk there now.
Well, that's what we're connecting into. See, I was on the assumption that...
Okay, so you're not going to put sidewalks all the way up to the other end?
We can.
Thank you. Thank you, God. We just made twenty-three parking places and if you put sidewalks, I think we'll lose them. And Steve, that I didn't understand about the access on Carpenter Street. Is there going to be one?
There's going to be a driveway access.
Okay, well, that driveway's going to be directly opposite my driveway and we'll lose two parking places.
Well, no, we, we're also have to give a road widening. As part of this project, we're actually giving up part of our property to, you know, for the future road widening Carpenter Street.
Future road widening? Did I just hear future?
That was done. I think what he's referring to is the property the town gave us, or the county gave us to make the parking spots.
You can't provide testimony.
They're already there.
Yeah, the parking's already there.
Oh, so, oh geez. I got excited you said future. Okay, so we're going to lose two and that's opposite my little stupid little driveway is going to be your driveway.
We didn't say we're losing, you said every one.
I'm talking about the access on Carpenter Street.
I think we're going to probably lose a lot of space. We're going to probably...
We're going to have a traffic expert testify if you would be kind enough to...
When is that?
Four, five minutes.
Oh, he's coming tonight?
He's ready, he's ready.
Oh, okay, okay. Okay, I'll wait for you, yell at you. Okay, the access, okay, the sidewalk. What are the plans for the tunnel?
With the tunnel, we're not planning to do anything with those tunnels. Those tunnels are...
They're not going to do anything at all?
No, we're going to, they're going to be blocked out within our area. What those tunnels were, were basically mechanical tunnels.
Oh, I know what they were.
They were mechanical tunnels to run piping and all kinds of, you know, utilities from one building in this complex to the other buildings, which are no longer part of our property.
Yeah, right.
So we're not, we're not doing anything.
So originally back in nineteen thirty-one, when this building was put up, there were other eight buildings. They all had tunnels. You never had to walk outside.
Correct.
That is correct. I wanted to know what happened.
We have no need for it because they don't go anywhere.
Okay, you know, about two years ago, there was a problem from the mental health and the tunnel there got backed up?
Well, it wasn't.
Okay, you might look into that.
We're going to be blocking, we're blocking them up, so, you know, our H normal access to...
Okay, you're just blocking them up, so there will be no access to the tunnels?
Not from our structure.
Okay. Someone mentioned something about the historic portion. If I have two minutes, I'll tell you. Okay, nineteen thirty-one, that building was finally completed, as were seven other buildings. So now there's a total of eight buildings on that property. Originally, it was made for consumption and it was well, in other words, you couldn't leave the property. They had their own cows, they had everything. They cured consumption. Nineteen fifty-one, when I got married, Dr. Ford offered me an apartment. That was for the consumption people. They had three-room apartments. Of course, we didn't take it. We bought building on Carpenter instead. But anyway, nineteen thirty-one, consumption, they cured that and it went to, the next one was...
TB.
No, before TB was the, that's why they called it, what do they call it?
Did you have a question or...?
No, no, just a little bit of history. Okay, from that, it went to colonial. We went, remember, as a kid, I was there with measles. That's why it was called, yeah.
Contagious diseases.
Contagious diseases, right. And every time they cured another disease, they got rid of it. You know what I'm saying? So it became geriatric and everything. But that's a very historic building. Like I say, you should not lose it. Prior to that building was another building and prior to that, it was called Pest Hill, P-E-S-T. So that building has never had anything but something to do with medicine and medical. And that's the history of it. It's never been any, this will be the first time it doesn't deal with medicine.
Well, we, that's why we're very proud to be involved with this building. We want to preserve and bring back the life of the structure because unfortunately, as you know, it's been laying there for so many years and it's been neglected.
Right, I know.
And we want to bring it back to life, so we appreciate the history because that's what we want to preserve from our architectural state.
One, one at a time, please. It should be recognized that the history has always been medicine.
Notice, thank you.
Pest Hill to the current, thank you.
Thank you very much.
How many, how many total parking...
Stand up and state your name, please.
Yes, Jim Neely. How many total parking spots and will they be assigned and how many guest parking spots?
Well, we can defer that question to the traffic engineer, Mr. Neely. He'll, he'll address all of those.
Thank you.
Does anybody else in the public have any questions?
Yeah, we're right over here.
Go ahead.
Vic Mafucci, just a couple of quick questions. The fifty-five-hundred square feet is strictly for the retail or does that include anything else?
Now, that's, that's going to be the convenience store and the, you know, the laundry mat, which is just retail.
And the laundry.
Which is just retail.
Yeah, okay. I didn't quite understand about the air conditioning units. What was going to be visible from the outside?
The windows, we're, we're going to design the windows to be, to provide the proper light in the air into the building because they're very sizable. They're going to be fitting in the existing openings, but at the very bottom, we would actually have a Hoover grill, which would be part of the window structure. So really, it's, it's a very nice way to not put any other fenestration onto the building, you know, like an air conditioning, you know, sleeve or whatever outside. So we're going to contain the unit inside the interior and all you would have visible is a small grill on the outside.
And they will provide them...
Okay, thank you. The porticoes on each side, each wing, what's the status of those?
You mean the outdoor terraces? Is that where you're, oh, the, oh, the porticoes where they used to drive the ambulance in?
Right.
Those areas are going to be preserved as they are.
Oh, good.
Thank you. As far as the garbage chutes and all that, how, who's going to separate the recycling if it's going to go into a compactor?
That's going to be handled internally with our individual, you know, our, our staff and I think, I think the owner probably would really feel into that question best for you.
Okay.
Because they, they handle the ongoing operation of the building and they have a lot of structures like this.
And the driveway to Carpenter will be discussed later, right?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, our next witness with the, is Carol Pono. We'll discuss drainage. When I used to sit up for you guys, I was like, oh, I must have said it before. Sorry, Carol.
Thank you.
Please, may I ask your name, spell your last name and address? My name is Carol Hope Orne. My last name is spelled H-O-B-R-N-L-E-I-N. And I'm licensed PE. I was licensed in two thousand and one.
Would you get closer to the microphone and let John go by you because he's...
Thank you.
Would you state your qualifications for the board, please?
I'm licensed PE. I got my license in two thousand and one. Licensed in, my specialty is water resources, which is where I typically do exams. And also, and I, I also certified as a municipal engineer, but not...
Have you testified before boards and given testimony and qualified as an expert?
Yes, I have in many, many towns in Burden County. And I've also been a planning member in Tom Townsley.
You're familiar with the site plan and what's going on here in terms of drainage, is that correct?
Yes, um, Mr. Tu...
What century was this?
Okay.
Right now, you've discussed it.
Okay. Mr. Tuval couldn't be here tonight, but I, but I assisted Mr. Tuval with the calculations for the stormwater drainage.
So would you explain how the stormwater drainage works on the site, please?
Yes, I brought, I brought colorized, the, the paint drainage now.
Carol, I'm going to ask you to mark the eight, seven. You're identifying the colorized picture of the site of the drainage.
Okay, basically, the existing drainage, the existing drainage system on the site is expensive and complicated, to say the least. There are several areas where the existing stormwater leaves the site. What we tried to do, I'll let me just show you where those are. Here, here's where, going toward Franklin, there are pipe system, there's stormwater leaving this way. There's also stormwater being collected down here along Carpenter Avenue and it goes, you know, into the street here. There's also stormwater leaving the site from, from the manhole here, going, you know, in the direction of, towards Bellevue. And so those, those are like the major areas where, where stormwater is leaving. What we tried to do, there's certain spots that already have stormwater system, you know, take, the system is taking the stormwater away on the areas that are existing. But what we tried to do was try to catch everywhere we could where there's new parking. And there's one area here that's proposed parking, but it's right on the edge of the, it's right on the edge of this slope going down. And what we, we're going to do here is we're just going to send that into the system here. But all the other areas, we wanted to try to catch. And what we, what we tried to do was we tried to recharge as much as possible because currently there's a few, there's a few inlets here that are, that are factored, that need to be cleaned out as mentioned in the letter, review letter. And so what we tried to do was put as little as possible into the system that's existing. So what we wanted to do is try to recharge as much as we could, but right now, we still need to know what the, you know, what the solar permeability is and the only way to get that is to, is testing.
By recharge, what do you mean?
Okay. On the state of New Jersey, what, in residential areas, what you, what you want to do is you want to take, take the stormwater and store it on the property where it falls. And that way, what happens is the, the stormwater will eventually make its way into the groundwater aquifers and eventually find its way to the stream. The key is you don't want it to go to the stream right away because that's what causes a lot of the flooding problems we see in New Jersey. And over years, we've increased our impervious coverage and we would just send it to the nearest stream. Sometimes we would, you know, we would slow it down, we might detain it a little bit, but we wanted to try to recharge as much as we could. It depends on really what the soil is going to, you know, soil tests are going to tell us, but less what our system does. There are four systems. There's a system here, which is basically a series of underground chambers. It's just under the parking lot, nobody's going to see it. But what it is, is layers of stone that water can seep into and basically like, like if you took a barrel, like a Thor fifty-five gallon drum and you cut it in half and then you turned each half over, that's what basically the system is, is it's a series of these, you know, these little chambers all put dumped together and then there's more stone on top and around it. And what it does is it stores the stormwater and then the stormwater will slowly seep into the ground where it is. So that would take out of the system, you know, a lot of this water wouldn't have to go into the streets and the systems on, you know, the main roads. So that's what we try to do, but it all depends, of course, on the final testing.
Well, in your, in your experience as a professional in this matter, based upon what you're observing, is it suitable and you think this, this site conducive to what you're trying to do?
Um, it could be. I mean, it seems like a lot of this area wasn't, a lot of times when it's an urban environment and the, the land has been, you know, built on over and over and there's been a lot of, you know, traffic and just in a real urban setting, you know, you, a lot of times the ground is so hard that water can't really get through. But we thought maybe in this situation, because, you know, there was a lot of grass area that had been that way for a while, that we may have some luck in trying to recharge as much as we can. But if that's not possible, the chambers can still act as a storage and then we can, based on where we put the outflow, we can kind of minimize the amount of water flowing out of each of these systems to the pipes if, if we have to drain the whole system of the slow water down. Because according to, according to the law, we don't necessarily have to do the recharge, but we thought it would be a good idea just because, you know, the less water you put into, you know, the municipal system, the better.
So in your opinion, you're looking to enhance the, the drainage on the site, which is already there and, and, and is functioning properly, is that correct?
Uh, well, currently, some of the, some of these inlets here are a little blocked here, but they have to clean up.
But if they were clear, they would function correctly.
Yeah, yeah. And then there's already systems that take the water in these areas here that's already little inlets that are all connected and they eventually head out this way. But what we wanted to try to do, there's this one system here that's going to collect the runoff, you can see the area P-two around here. And there's going to be, we're going to put a little drain at the bottom of this little ramp and catch that as well. That's going to be here. And this area here, P-five, and, and P-four are going to go here. And then P-six has its own little area and then P-seven, and this area down here, P-seven, that's going to be in the larger area down here. We're also going to have a, a little trench drain at the bottom of the ramp there to catch that as well. So we're going to try to catch as much as we can. And the, right now, the increase in impervious on the site is about eleven point three percent is the increase in impervious. But what we want to do is we want to decrease the runoff. Right now, the, according to the calculations we just did, the, assuming that the permeability that we had, but we may have to change that at least now. So we're going to try to catch as much as we can. And the, right now, the increase in impervious on the site is about eleven point three percent is the increase in impervious. But what we want to do is we want to decrease the runoff. Right now, the, according to the calculations we just did, the, assuming that the permeability that we had, but we may have to change that at least then we find out from the testing. There will be, for the hundred-year storm, there will be a twenty percent decrease in runoff. For the two-year storm, there will be a fifty percent decrease in the runoff. That's usually the reductions in the residential standards in the state of New Jersey. And the reason was because we were experiencing so much flooding. Anytime there was a residential project, they want you to reduce, not just keep it the same and not increase it, but actually reduce it all. And since there was a lot of runoff from areas that, like here and here, you know, we wanted to try to keep as much of the runoff from the parking lots on the site as possible. We don't, one thing we don't have here, but...
Mr. Esposito, if you could open the back door, please, it's getting a little warm. I know they did it for noise, but...
We basically have no, we have no problem complying with any of the concrete.
Thank you very much. I have no further questions.
My question is, I guess we need more testing before we come up with a concrete plan?
What, as I understand the testimony, correct me if I'm wrong, is the site is conducive to handling the stormwater runoff? Now we're looking to improve. So yes, but it requires further testing or...
Or, but we could, the amount of, the volume of the systems right now are designed to hold the hundred-year storm, you know. So we have enough stormwater storage, what I'm saying, is to store the hundred-year storm completely in these areas that are catching it. So we could, we could give you a design that would still, you know, just, it would, it would help if we want to recharge.
But the question I think is, does it work now and we're looking to improve it? Is that actually what we're doing?
It will work if we just have to make...
Other than maintenance?
It will work, it will work, but we, right now, it's designed for recharge of an assumed percolation rate, and we don't know what that is.
I'll get back to my question. It works now, correct? It will work now with the experience of the lines, is that correct?
Yes, it will work. We'll just have to maybe adjust the paint and...
That just means more money. Is that the other question? And we look to improve it by doing this other thing, is that what your testimony is? With these other things that you're looking to do?
Yes.
With the increased impervious, the system will function with the increased impervious surface?
Yes.
We're not going to have any, like, above-ground ponds like next door?
No, no, we don't do those anymore usually.
That's as far as a detention basin needs to be.
Right. No, we're not designing for detention basin.
No, no, it's all, all the, all the systems are going to be underneath the pavement, so you won't even see them.
And the systems will, you'll address it as well as our parking expert. You'll address the drainage of those systems where those parking areas will be, especially on the one side.
It'll work as an underground detention basin now, because it stores a hundred-year storm. But for the testing, they can make a recharge or help instead of just holding it and discharging it slowly. So recharge is a lot, I think it's a lot better than discharging it slowly into the system.
And you will work if this is approved with the applicant?
Yep.
Based on future testing? If anything else needs to be done, you will address that, Mr. Esposito?
Yes, it will work with, physically, they'll work, it's a cert.
Any board members have questions, Mr. Esposito? Does anybody in the pub?
Darlene Green, I don't know anything about drainage. I only have one question. The green on your plant, does that indicate grass?
Is that right?
It indicates grass.
Yes.
Okay, on the site plans prepared by the architect...
Oh, I thought you said rats. I'm sorry.
On the site plan, the courtyard is shown as concrete.
Well, right now, currently, this is covered. So right now, this is impervious at the moment, but they're going to open it up and it will become pervious.
That conflicts with the site plan. The site plan shows it as concrete. So I guess I'm just curious, which plan is correct? Are we going to have grass or are we going to have concrete?
John, are we having grass or concrete?
It's going to be opened up all the way to the basement level, so we're taking the existing roof off. And it's going to be, it could be grass, we have it as concrete, so it could be grass. It doesn't...
Your question is, what are we going to do with it?
We're going to make it grass.
Okay, thank you.
So then, a condition of your approval will amend the plan to show grass?
Yes.
Thank you.
As in garden grass?
As in courtyard?
Well, I think it's becoming legal now, so...
Are we on the record?
She can't hear.
I can. One at a time.
You okay, Jerry?
Yeah.
I can assume that since we went from cement to grass, are we going to make a pool there eventually?
No.
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 Basically, that area has a roof over it now, okay? That's really what it is, so it's impervious. So it doesn't allow any water to get through and doesn't allow water to permeate into the ground naturally. Obviously, with green technology, it would be a good idea to take, we're taking that roof off. So we'll take up the concrete slab that's there and just make it grass. It's not very easy for us to do, and it would help the project to do that, so I don't have a problem with that. And that would eliminate one of the other commissioners' concern regarding the drainage. You know, he was concerned about how we're going to handle the drainage. And we indicated we would do that at the next phase, which is the construction drawing phase. But here, if we make it grass, it's going to allow the water to permeate back into the ground naturally.
Out of curiosity, that courtyard, is that the basement floor level?
That's correct. Yeah, there's actually a little drainage down there too, no?
Would you need drainage in that area?
In the basement area itself?
Well, in the grassy area.
Well, the grassy area, you're going to need some. You know, just for runoff conditions, you know, nothing, you know, nothing too significant. But if we make all that, you know, impervious, I mean, pervious surface now...
Obviously, you're going to take care of that area, else you're going to get water in the basement.
Absolutely. Yeah, I mean, there will be, you know, drains there, but they're not going to be nowhere near as significant as if we paved it and concrete. It actually would help the project.
Any other members? No other members, I'll open it up to the public. Does anybody in the public have questions of this witness? If not, you'd like to call your next witness?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Levy, who is our landscape architect.
Thank you. Do you swear to tell the truth and hold true to the oath of the truth while you're gone?
I do. Scott Levy, Scott Allen Design Landscape Architects, sixteen Main Street of Hamburg, New Jersey.
So Levy, would you state your qualifications to the board?
Yes, I am a licensed landscape architect in the state of New Jersey. I went to school at the College of Forestry up at Syracuse University. I have served as the Borough Landscape Architect for Saddle River, Little Ferry. I sat as the chairman for the zoning board for Borough Fairlon. I also served as the vice chairman for the planning board for the Borough Fairlon.
We'll accept your expertise.
Thank you very much. You're familiar with the project, correct?
I am.
And you're familiar with the comments that were submitted by Mr. Harrison and Miss Green?
I am.
Will you discuss with the board some of those comments and what we're doing to address those comments?
Yes.
I see you're marking something up there, or you're quoting something?
Yes.
Mark that page eight and tell us what it is.
This is a rented landscape plan that is in a package that has been developed or delivered to the board, indicating lawn areas, trees, shrub areas, the parking lot and the building area.
Would you discuss, I know that we've had comments from Mr. Harrison and Miss Green, and I know that you tried to respond to them, so if you could do that.
Yeah, basically, I mean, I'll start where, you know, Miss Green had, and I had some discussions along Carpenter Avenue, especially along the area between the parking lot and Carpenter Avenue that would be used for planting and screening.
Can you advise us Carpenter Street?
I'm sorry, Carpenter Street.
You don't have to mark it, just know that it's a street.
Carpenter Street. I remember that. I won't forget that next time. There was a discussion of what was required according to the colors. A mixture of canopy trees, flowering trees, evergreen trees, and shrubs. This area is about an eight-foot wide area between Carpenter Street and the parking lot. The use of evergreen trees like pines or cedars won't be able to be used in this area because of the width. I had marked down a plant called pencil point juniper. That would grow around between eight feet. Miss Green had mentioned that she had read that it was five feet. Regardless, I agree with her comment on that, that that may not be one to use in that area because of the height. It's the consideration to screen the parking area as much as possible between the residences that are on the, I guess, south side, oh, I'm sorry, on the west side to the parking lot on the east side. There is a tree that's called Skyrocket Juniper. And the Skyrocket Juniper grows widthwise between three and four feet and can get up to about fifteen feet in height. That would be good in this area because it'll allow for the screening to occur at a higher level and screen out as much of the parking as possible. In addition to that, the use of canopy trees. One deciduous trees will be used, and I believe I have oak that along that area. In addition to that, on the ground plane, to bring some interest also to add for at least at the three-foot height level, additional screening, the use of evergreen azalea hedge along that area as well. So that'll, that'll provide the requirements that are necessary. It's a unique site, it's a nice site. Fortunately, a lot of the material that's there is old and dying and is falling apart. There's secondary growth within the oval area that has been there for at least between twenty, twenty-five years or ever since the facility has closed down. That's going to be removed. There's the opportunity on a historical aspect to bring this back to life, this oval back to life. So what was done, there's a center walk and a, within the walk that goes, I'll say, north and south. In the center, there's a circular area that we're going to recreate, provide seating around there. So as you go towards the north, it goes to nowhere. So what we do is, landscape architects, we'd like to provide aesthetic quality control and determinus to that, something that's a focal point. So what I did was create a sitting area in there, and it will provide a trellis structure at determinus in addition to providing flowering trees, ground cover, and then seating as well. Along the walkway, there'll be a series of benches, two by two, going from south to north. And again, within the center area, the benches and the flowering trees, cherries, and then flowering shrubs within that area to give seasonal interest. Also, it allowed to recreate this as an open area for the use of the residents of the new building as well as the surrounding area. People do walk back and forth, they did that when I was out there a number of times. And they created green space. There are a number of trees that are there now that are existing, pines and oaks that I've designated to maintain. In addition, along the perimeter, there's a requirement of one tree every fifty feet, which was placed. And I've done that, placed tillias. Because of being paved practices, we like to use native material where we can and some, especially material that's not going to be affected by insects that devastated some of this area in the north. So the trees that I'm using are ones that are resistant to those bugs. Moving down towards the west side, the southwest side, there, again, there are some material, large material that exists that needs to come down. But there's this one oak, it's a sixty-inch oak, and talking about the history of the site, this, this one is one that needs to be saved. And it's been designated, so should, and being maintained within the lawn area. There are evergreen trees that will be placed closer to the parking lot on this side so it'll mitigate the effects of any of the lights that will shine out from that area, especially to the residents that's on the southwest part in that location. And then, just to recreate the landscape, putting some canopy trees in that area as well. The surrounding, around the building, again, creating green space, providing flowering trees, flowering shrubs, and ground cover as well, and providing aesthetic quality to it. We did have the opportunity to also place additional trees within the parking lot that's on the west side to, again, soften up the impact of the asphalt. There's opportunity to do that in the planting spaces that we've created in that area. There are two courtyards that are within the south portion of the site. Those are designated as garden areas, but should the board approve the application, those will be developed further. As well as the area that you talked about, the courtyard, that will now turn into a green space, so.
In terms of tree protection fences and that sort of thing, was one of Miss Green's comments?
Yes, on the grading plan and removal plan, tree protection will be indicated and the details will be provided.
What about permanency, continued stabilization in terms of, for example?
That'll be provided as well.
There was a comment that redevelopment plan required ten percent of the paved parking area to be used for interior landscaping, is that something you...
We've discussed it, and I believe that's been noted on plans to be developed that Mr. Leaker had developed.
So the modifications that we made now?
Yes.
I think you addressed the other items, was Darlene, what do you have? I have no further questions of this, will you at this point?
Is there going to be fencing along Franklin Avenue and Carpenter?
Franklin Avenue Carpenter? I don't believe so. We haven't fenced it, no.
No. No fencing, okay. Jerry?
I'm familiar with Bradburn, and so you're, I know that...
I love Bradburn. I moved into Fairlon, I realized I lived there, took my books and walked around.
My daughter's on Burlington, so, but, so the reason I bring up Bradburn is when I take a look at that lovely area in the back, I think I'm seeing just one straight walkway.
Yeah.
It's very, it's very formal.
It's part of the history of the site.
So are we going to do an Old West Ferry type of thing, or...
Well, what I did was recreating the walkway and then keeping the circular pattern in the middle and aligning, aligning those with canopy trees.
Yeah, those magnolias, where are you putting them?
The magnolias, the magnolias are being placed on the north side between, I'm not sure what this, what the site is, in this area and around the side here.
When they shed, they tend to be an issue when they shed, as far as making those, you know, when they shed those petals and they're quite heavy and slippery. So I was just wondering if they were near sidewalk area or not.
No, no.
Junipers, junipers around here tend to burn out.
Yes. That's why they're going to be placed with canopy trees alongside them.
That's, that's the frustration of, you know, junipers look great, and then all of a sudden, when they start to burn out, it's just...
Yeah.
But I'm, I would hope that you would have as, maintain and develop as much as green space as, as possible because it is a premium in this town.
Yes.
And I think it's great that you would try to maintain the historic perspective on it as well.
Jerry? Lawn Carpenter, you said you were walking with eight feet between the street and the parking lot.
Yes.
Would that consider also the work for the... Would that consider also the sidewalk included?
That is, you'll have a four-foot sidewalk and then you have the eight-foot.
Okay, so it's twelve feet old together?
I believe so, yes.
Is there a, I didn't think there was going to be a sidewalk.
There is no sidewalk north of the driveway, the sidewalk south of driveway.
I thought so. They provided additional parking there, right? That's where the bump, they bumped it in. There's additional parking, that's just a stay as is.
You'll have to talk to the traffic engineer.
Anybody else on the board have questions of this witness? If not, does anybody in the public have questions of this witness? Victor?
Victor Fuji. I couldn't hear everything you said. Since Bellevue's cherry blossom capital, I hope there's some cherry blossom trees in the mix. Okay, thank you.
Does anybody else in the public have any questions? If not, would you like to call your witness?
Yeah, we have the lawyer way to traffic.
My name is Joseph Stiger, S.T.A.I.G.A.R., Seventeen Tremont Drive, Los Angeles.
Would you state your qualification line of origin?
Yes, I have a bachelor of science, master of science degrees in New Jersey Institute of Technology at which I've also been an adjunct professor of traffic engineering courses, N G I T. Professional engineer license in the state of New Jersey as well as other states in the northeast. It's been a number of years actually since I've been before this board but I have testified in with township on numerous occasions, I would say six or seven or eight occasions over the past years. I've been in Nutley on probably eleven months over the last, for a court reporter to testify to.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stiger. Stiger, would you discuss the traffic aspects of this applicant with the board?
Yes, we have prepared a traffic impact analysis. And that traffic impact analysis is basically in three parts. Evaluation of existing conditions, proposed conditions, assessment of the impacts of proposed conditions. And then working with the site engineer and analyzing the site plan to ensure that we have adequate access to the site, internal circulation and parking.
And that document is submitted before, correct?
Yes, correct.
So if we could mark that or designate that as A nine, Mr. Stiger? Okay, thank you, Mr. Stiger.
So the first part that we did was we went out, we took traffic counts, made roadway measurements, how many lanes, the timing of the traffic light at Bellevue and Franklin. Those traffic counts were taken at intersection of Bellevue and Franklin as well as the access driveway out to Bellevue Avenue. Carpenter Street is a one-way northbound direction. So you have vehicles that are going into Carpenter, there would be nothing coming out onto Bellevue Avenue which would be the critical aspect of that driveway. So we did specifically analyze Carpenter Street but we have the other two access points. Main driveway on Bellevue that we analyze for future conditions but the intersection of Bellevue Avenue and Franklin. Took those traffic counts recently, this month on Monday, June first, as well as Wednesday, June third. Peak hours happen between seven forty-five and eight forty-five a.m. When we take our traffic counts, we establish when we take them by looking at the roadway and figure what's peak hour of the roadway. This is a typical commuter roadway network in the area. So that's seven to nine a.m., four to six p.m. is the time when the roadway peaks. We have primarily a residential use that's being proposed and residential uses generate their peak periods between seven and nine, four to six. So we keyed in on those two areas, the typical rush, rush time, rush hours. And we found that between seven forty-five and eight forty-five is the morning peak hour, four forty-five to five forty-five is the p.m. peak hour. And we assume the worst-case scenario that the peak generation of the site, the new residential units and retail use will peak at the same time that the roadway peaks. So that's the worst-case scenario. They can be offset by a half hour or even an hour. But we assume the worst-case scenario that they peak on peak.
Mr. Stiger, can I interrupt you for a second? Your analysis is based on seventy-five hundred square feet of retail, correct?
That's correct.
And you understand that the applicant is only going forward fifty-five hundred square feet of retail?
Correct.
And that both the laundromat and the convenience store will be for internal use for the residents of that, correct?
That's correct. Not generating outside traffic but we made the assumption that it would be generated. So utilizing it as a retail, laundromat and a convenience store, as if it was open to the public, as if it was on the main roadway, again, just to be conservative. The two forty-five, two hundred and forty-five apartments and a seventy-five hundred square foot retail use would generate a hundred and forty-five trips in the morning and a hundred and seventy-two trips in the evening peak hours. Those are hourly volumes. You'll have more traffic obviously in the shoulder time periods before and after those peaks. But those are the peak hours. One thing about, and this, and primarily and particularly with the concept that the retail will be utilized by solely by the residents, the proposed residences developing and that the traffic is generated, will be generated by the residential uses only. One thing about residential uses is that it is a rather modest trip generator because it's not like the bell rings and everybody runs out to work and then everybody arrives at the same time. People, some people go to work six, six-thirty in the morning where others may not leave until nine, nine-thirty. So you've got that three-hour window for the majority of traffic that will leave the site. And in the evening, same things. Some people will be home by four o'clock, other one, other people, particularly if they're at planning board meetings, won't be home until eleven o'clock at night. But primarily, again, another three, four-hour window that the traffic syphons in. So you don't have the heavy peaks as you would. And I'll make a comparison, the former use of a hospital or medical use when you have a staff change. All right, you have a shift change where the nurses come in in the morning, they're all punching the time card. Their time cards aren't particular, probably within a fifteen, twenty-minute period. And the same holds true when they're leaving as well. So that type of use has a very much condensed and intense time period. But in dealing with that number of units, two hundred and forty-five, we're looking at those volumes of traffic. Many times I'll get, well, two hundred and forty-five units, you know, why are your numbers so low? But the reason being though, those are hourly volumes and you'll see the, you'll see well, well, much more traffic going in and out over that three or four-hour period as people leave for work or arrive from work. We took that traffic and we superimposed it onto the volumes that we counted out in field. So we have existing volumes, what we counted this past couple of weeks out on Bellevue and Franklin Avenue. We also make the assumption, while traffic typically increases to a certain degree through the years and this site's not going to be occupied next week or next month or next year, we took a two-year window that if, considering that we got the approval from this board in the next month or two, hopefully tonight, that we will see, that you won't be occupied for at least two years. So we use that as a window. New Jersey DOT has published documentation of, particularly of Essex County roadways of major arterials such as this and how much traffic they do generate and increase annual growth rates. It's about one percent. We all have the two percent and the three percent that we've seen before the recession but over the years we see about a one percent increase. So we took existing volumes, increased it by another two percent considering it's going to grow over the next two years. And then we took our site traffic, the volumes I just gave you that the residential and retail would generate and superimposed that on top of that. And we put that onto the roadway network and ran the analyses of the intersection of Bellevue and Franklin Avenue to see what the impacts would be. And analyzed in the intersection or any roadway feature, we have a computer model that we input the volumes, how many vehicles are turning left through and right, the green time, yellow time, red time, the light, how many lanes. And we're able to model that intersection and establish what the average delays are. And average delays are grouped into levels of service. If the average delay is zero to ten seconds, we're a level of service A. If we're at eighty seconds or more, we're at level of service F. And then we have the interim levels of service in between. Just as in grade school, levels of service are, best condition is A, worst condition is F. Right now, that intersection Bellevue Avenue and Franklin Avenue operates at a level of service anywhere from B to D. B as in boy, D as in dog. And the way we look at that is that some movements, whether it's eastbound, northbound, southbound or westbound, have longer delays than other maneuvers, movements. But we're in that range between B and D, which is an acceptable levels of ser, level of service. E is the direct capacity, your volume is at the capacity of that intersection. When you're at F, your volume exceeds the capacity of that intersection. So we're in that mid-range of B through D, an acceptable level currently under existing conditions. When we superimpose onto the existing volumes, the growth rate, the two percent growth rate plus our traffic, we, the delays increase but not enough to change the levels of service. We don't drop from C to D or D to E. They all remain about the same. They do, in fact, they do remain all the same with or without the site traffic. So that tells us that the impacts of what's being developed here is not going to have a negative impact on the roadway network. Because most of that traffic, the most, the intersection's going to be impacted, potentially impacted the most is going to be Bellevue and Franklin Avenue. Beyond that site, you have good dispersion of traffic. People, as they leave this, as they leave the property, will now venture out beyond that intersection and as you go further and further beyond, the traffic does diminish beyond that, beyond the volumes that we're dealing with leaving the site. We analyzed the driveway of the site. We have, basically, we have three access points. We have a driveway on Bellevue Avenue to enter and exit the site. We have a, yeah, Bellevue Avenue. We have another driveway in the back of the property where the circle is off of Franklin Avenue. And we have a third driveway that will tie into Carpenter Street which will be a right turn in, right turn out because Carpenter Street has a one-way northbound. The other two driveways will be full movement driveways, we don't make lefts or right turns in and out. We analyze those driveways and we have good levels of service as well. We're anywhere from level service A through C at those driveways. I'm sorry, we have a D for the Bellevue Avenue site driveway in the morning peak hour when you have the higher volume trying to leave the site. So we're in the range of A through D, again, acceptable levels of service. The third part of the traffic study-
If I can stop you for a moment, Mr. Stiger, in terms of Carpenter Street, what is going to be the consequence to parking along Carpenter Street by that driveway that's there? Are we going to lose any spaces on the street?
You'll, you potentially lose one to two spaces by having that driveway open if there's parking there now.
One of the, I believe it's Ms. Hang?
It'll be two, two spaces.
Indicate that her driveway is directly across that driveway. What if any consequence will be to her movements?
Yeah, the Carpenter Street driveway would be the least utilized for this site. The majority of, vast majority of the traffic will either come directly out on the Bellevue Avenue or Franklin Avenue. Some traffic may as an added convenience but it'll be a very low volume that would use Carpenter Street. Levels of service will not change. The driveways that are either across the street or along Carpenter Street will not change. The order of magnitude that we're talking about using Carpenter, if you refer to my traffic report, if the numbers are right. Again, we contemplated that we've probably seen the order of seven to eight vehicles per hour in and out of that side driveway. It really goes nowhere. As I said, it's a, it's a good aspect of having it for emergency access if it needs to be. And again, just a, just a matter of the ability of having convenience to be able to go out that way. But again, we're talking less than ten vehicles per hour using that driveway during the peak hours and obviously during the middle of the day and at night, it'll be zero to less than ten per hour. So no impact on the quality of life or well-being or the levels of service on Carpenter Street.
Can you discuss the effect, if any, on the school that's located across the street?
Yes, and that we're, we are across the street from the elementary school that is across the street. But the operation, good site visibility, that's the key point, ensure that you have good site visibility so that you have no conflicts of movements. So again, that'll work hand in hand with the elementary school movements at that location.
And you have any opinion with regard to like, you know, school buses and that sort of stuff that are, or vehicles that are traveling or about the site or near the site and how that'll affect?
Yeah, again, the same thing, the visibility at this location, which I think is the key safety feature of that as well. The one thing is that these will be residents in the area. So what we find is that rather than have transient people that are just passing by or visiting the site on a periodic basis, these are going to be people that are part of the neighborhood as well. They'll be cognizant of the school being there. And again, give it a very regard in terms of operating safely, operate their vehicles in a safe manner.
Thank you very much.
The last part being the site plan. We looked at the access, as I pointed out, three points of access. Again, we're not changing the access, the main access points on Franklin Avenue and Bellevue Avenue. Let me go back one more before I'd like, again, I made a comparison also of what the former use was. And as I said, when we're talking of vehicles, number of vehicles of this site that would generate anywhere between a hundred and forty-five to a hundred and seventy-five vehicles per hour. I did a comparison with the former use and I know the place has been closed down, the building has closed down for many, many years and has been a quiet giant sitting there. But as a medical, a hospital or medical use, it would generate far more traffic than the volumes that I just gave you. The peak hour volumes would well exceed over five hundred trips per hour. This is a quarter million square foot building that if it was to be used for medical office would generate far more traffic than what's, what's being proposed before this board. I just make that as a, just as a comparison. I don't, I don't, I don't take it as, you know, this is a potential reopening as a medical office use but it did operate as one and in the comparison generated far more traffic than the proposal before us. Third aspect, as I said, access, good access to the site, good levels of service at the driveways, good visibility. The internal circulation, I'll get to in a minute, but let me go to parking. We are, and we exceed the parking requirements of your ordinance. The way that I read it, we are required to have two hundred and sixty parking spaces for the redevelopment plan, I should say, and we're providing three forty-five. So we're eighty-five spaces over the requirements. I know there was some question about handicap spaces. The ADA code requires two percent of your parking spaces to be handicap spaces. So at three forty-five, we would need seven handicap spaces and I think we're providing eight, eight spaces. We're eighty-five over and if there's a need for additional striking and parking, we can provide it and still easily comply with your, with your standards. But we're not anticipating a need for anything greater than the eight spaces. But if there is that need, we can always provide that.
Mr. Stiger, if I can stop you there because I don't know if you were in the, in the building at the time but there was a question with two hundred and forty-five apartment units that whether or not, even though it was compliant with the ADA and whatever else we need to comply with, whether or not that was going to be sufficient. In your experience, what's your, what's your observation?
It is, the eight, the eight handicap spaces, one is sufficient for me. That's, that is the federal law. That's what studies have shown that this would generate in that order of magnitude of handicap spaces. But we do have the flexibility to provide more. We can't provide less than the seven, first of all. We're even more providing eight. And if we need to provide more, we still, and still easily comply with the redevelopment plan.
Is there anything in your observation of the proposed site plan that would warrant more handicap spaces in the site?
No, this is going to be occupied with a wide spectrum, let's say, average type of residents. We're not anticipating more handicap people. This is not a senior citizen housing or that type of housing that we would anticipate anything different than what the average or what the norm would be, which would be seven parking spaces.
Thank you very much.
The, the access around the site, our driveways, all easily handled. The parking maneuvers, the perpendicular parking that we have, the two-way traffic flow throughout the site. Good access throughout. Did not see any issues at all with any blind spots. Worked hand in hand with the site architect and engineer to ensure that we had easy access throughout the site. One thing that we always look at is, and particularly with a, a building of this magnitude, is fire access. And we actually went to, I think it's 245 Franklin Avenue, right around the corner is the, Franklin Avenue is the main firehouse for the township. And we measured the largest trucks that are there, the ladder truck that's there and the largest pumper that the fire department uses. And we're able to model the maneuverability of those vehicles as well. And I did prepare, and I can present it as a, as an exhibit.
So we're counting up to mark eight. Is there more than one or one?
There's two.
First one would be A10, if you don't mind.
Okay, I need a pen. A10, and today's date is the 15th. This is, this is actually ladder truck turning exhibit A. And what it is, it's the 40-foot ladder truck that the fire department in township has with a wheelbase of 19.19 feet and four inches. And we're able to model the, the turning capabilities of that truck. And we depicted that, that model of making a different angle turns and what the path of the inside path is and what the outside path of the vehicle is. And we can take that and actually drive the vehicle through the AutoCAD site plan to ensure that the aisles are, are wide open and the vehicle can circulate around the site and get to every aspect of the building. On the, on the west side, I'm sorry, on the east side, we showed it going across the parking. But the angle of the, of the access closer to the building provides less than, less than the 90-degree turn, and it can make those turns as well. So there is easy access for the entire perimeter of the site that surrounds the building by the ladder truck. So again, we wanted to ensure that, that we had easy access. We had, we showed the truck coming in off of Franklin Avenue, most likely from the north, the main firehouse, making a right turn. Now Franklin Avenue is four lanes wide, so under emergency conditions, that vehicle can easily make a wide swing if it needed to do, into the driveway with sirens blasting and the, and the lights going. And then from there, it can circulate around the entire, the entire perimeter of the, of the site. I have him, I have him actually then, then leaving out of Belleville Avenue after the fire is out, and then coming back to the fire, the firehouse. In addition to the ladder truck, we have a similar exhibit for the largest pumper truck. Now, this is a smaller truck than the ladder truck, and I'll, I'll label that as A7.
A11.
Oh, I'm sorry, A11. And 615, 15. And this is entitled Pumper Truck Turning Exhibit B. And we went out, we measured the, the pumper truck that's utilized in the township and actually housed in the fire department firehouse. And it did the same thing. And it's, being a smaller truck, it was academic that the ladder truck can make it, then the pumper can easily make it throughout the site. So we wanted to show that we have good, good access for all, all vehicles, inclusive, inclusive of the fire truck apparatus. Delivery trucks, in the same way, can circulate throughout the site. We analyzed that as well. We don't anticipate tractor trailers coming into the site, but a small one, a wheelbase 50 truck tractor trailer can access the site easy. Mostly what you'll see in moving, you'll have single unit trucks. Garbage truck is a single unit truck. Delivery trucks will be, will be single units as well. And again, easily replicated, by comparing it to the ladder truck, they'll be able to circulate the site as well.
Waste holders, they'll have access to the, to the area where the recyclables and the solid waste will be, and that won't be a problem.
No, we designed it to accommodate that, the largest garbage truck or ref- refuge truck that may come to the site.
I have no further questions to Mr. Steiger at this time, Mr. Chairman.
And I have, I have a couple. Is 345 parking spots or 351?
I have 345 on the latest plan. I have, it, I had it in my report, it's 351. I, I believe it's 345.
Because I know Mr. Harris' report says 351.
Yeah, that was the original plan. Yeah, I think.
That's what we had.
Well, the other plan is A6, Mr. Chairman, this is getting.
Second question. Number, number 10 school directly across the street, the parents, when they drop off and pick up, aren't able to access the parking lot. So they drop off and pick up at the curb. And it's kind of a bottleneck there. And my concern is, when people coming in and out of that driveway, do you see an issue or anything you could do to alleviate it? And if you're coming out that driveway at peak time, making a left, do you think traffic would back up?
We're talking about Belleville Avenue driveway?
Belleville Avenue driveway, it's a school directly across the street. And the parents drop off at the curb. There is no, the parking lot is only for the teachers to park, and they can't drive through. And it's just a concern that, you know, people exiting the facility there, making a left, they're going to be.
If they, if they were going to make the left turn, they're either going to start, head towards Fire Moss, or they'll go through, Belleville, they'll go through the park. If they find it to be a problem, they can always use the, and probably an easier movement is to make the right turn out of Franklin Avenue. Because A, the left turn's always more difficult than a right turn. And if they found that it was bottlenecked over here for whatever reason, the easier, easier access is certainly going to be out of Franklin Avenue. They go right, make the left to go through the park.
I got a question. Just, well, I'm a finisher.
So I, I don't see, I don't see a heavy left turn out of the driveway, because you have the alternative of making the right turn. And I know that the window of drop-offs in the morning, you know, for 15 minutes, and then it clears out as if, as if nothing happened. So I don't see it being an issue because of that alternative of being able to come out on the Franklin Avenue.
And do you feel that the driveway on Carpenter is absolutely necessary? Because I know residents here are concerned about that. It's a very narrow residential street, and they're concerned, A, about losing the spots, and B, is the increased traffic. I mean, is, is that driveway necessary?
From my aspect, it's not, because, because the traffic, if we took those 10 vehicles per hour that we fully feel that's going to utilize that driveway, we put them onto, onto the Belleville Avenue or Franklin Avenue driveway, we'll still have adequate access. I don't have the fire truck, I don't see a fire truck or any emergency vehicle coming out on the Carpenter, so it's not needed for, for, for emergency access. So I don't, from my, from my technical aspect, I don't see the need for it, no, in all honesty.
I have a few questions. You talked about the traffic study on Franklin. Have you done anything on Belleville?
Yeah, well, we, we looked at the intersection of Franklin and Belleville, and then looked at Carpenter Avenue all the way around to the driveway on Franklin Avenue. So across the entire frontage of the site, we took at the, we took a look at the traffic condition.
Reason being, I know we're speaking about the school that's number 10 across on Belleville Avenue. There is a school on a property near that oval.
Oh, yeah, that's behind, right, that's behind the, correct.
Right, one side there. Now, they're having a problem now utilizing that, I mean, Mr. Harris, maybe you can help with this too also. They're having a problem having, and that street is not good enough on the other side of the oval.
On the other, other side, the oval, I guess, the northerly side, yes.
That's a concern for them, because it's, the street is too small. And it goes back as far as when the county divided up the property, there was supposed to be an easement for the entire circle, for all the people to have, and you're closing that up now. So the concern would be, what happens with that road? And quite honestly, Mr. Harris, I'd like to know who's responsible for that road at this point.
It's not, it's not, when they come in off of Franklin Avenue, this applicant is going to go to the left.
Right.
Right.
Correct, that's what I'm.
To the right, is he, there has always been some controversy between Grogan and Essex Park and everybody over there, so. But that, that's not on their property.
Right, but isn't it considered an easement? That, that's the understanding most people have, that that whole oval was to be utilized as an easement.
She's saying that the circle should remain the same.
Right.
Right now, it's open, it's open all the way.
I know. I think she's saying that this project is going to close it. Was it an easement?
I don't know, this project's not closing, is it?
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is.
Absolutely, you can see it right there. Right on the corner above that other property, further down, right there. Nope, a little further down. There.
Yeah, there's all parking along this edge here.
Correct, and they would not have any access to that.
And I think you're asking, Patty, if I may, is that an easement? Legally, they're, they're not allowed to do that, and my requirement by yours.
Because there's a lot of controversy about that whole.
We're not aware of easement across that portion of the property. I don't know if you are, John.
No, but I just, I think I could share something, Commissioner, if it would help. That area is blocked off with like barricades right now.
Well, that's because there's a lawsuit going on with that one property. Because they feel he should be, people should be paying him. And he has closed off that exit. I mean, also, I don't know if it's your property or not, but there's also construction equipment and a trash into that parking lot area.
Right. Still there, still there.
I don't know whose responsibility that is, if it's not yours.
Well, that's my client, I mean, we're, we had to do some, you know, repairs.
Oh, all right, so it's yours, all right, no, just because it didn't seem like it was kind of bad advice.
When the YFC family brought this, it was brought, we worked with Mr. DiLorenzo and others to secure that area in the police department and do other things to that property, to make sure that things weren't falling down and hurt.
Absolutely, I know the sheriff's office was involved in blocking off the road because of some destruction. But Belleville Avenue had, I have a concern as far as the Belleville Avenue.
Driveway?
Yeah, the whole, that whole section over there. Because it's very tight for the buses to come in that way. It's a two-way street, and it's not really made for two-way street.
Belleville Avenue?
From Belleville Avenue into the property, on your oval.
Well, we say the oval, the oval's off of Franklin.
Franklin Avenue, I'm sorry. When you come in from Franklin, that street is not really made for two-way.
I hear what you're saying, Patty, but I don't think that's their concern.
Yeah, we're not touching that, that roadway. It's not our property.
That's the way it's always been. I don't see how that's their problem.
No, because they had the whole, it was always a one-way, coming in and going around, and that's what I'm.
No, that's not true, Patty, that's two-way.
It's two-way now.
Now.
And when the Cantor Center had it, it was still two-way.
No.
One-way. It was one-way around the complete oval.
Well, we're not aware of any pieces that require.
When you drove in, you had to go to the right. And when the, the metal hub was there, they, they used to come out that way too. That's the way it is now.
Mental health is still there. Growing force, yeah.
Right, well, we'll go on as far as that.
You were able to drive all around, but that wasn't, that wasn't the way it was designed. It was designed as a two-way.
No.
No.
Okay. We've got the canine dogs back there where the sheriff's department was, and that was a two-way, that's a two-way now. That's a two-way road to the right when you come in.
It was one-way.
From that old Franklin Avenue, you go into either the metal hub or Grogan's apartments, and you leave the same way.
No, it's just one-way.
It's two-way.
Now. It used to be one-way. If you were the company, it was the way. But one person has to have a sign.
We're not entertaining questions from the audience at this time.
Okay, so.
I, I've seen it operated as two-way, and I had the buses pass my car, and, and we were able to drive one another. So I didn't see, it, obviously, it would be easier if it was one-way, but as operating as two-way traffic, I didn't see the difficulty. It's wide enough to easily handle two-way traffic.
All right, I'll continue that. What I noticed on the plans is that your parking spaces that you have listed here, they're right up against the steps in the front.
Well, there's, well, that, we have a sidewalk, and I believe that sidewalk is at least six feet wide to accommodate a two-foot overhang and then have a, have a four-foot clear area.
Okay, because I also, as we discussed about the fire trucks coming in, there's, if you're going to have parking around the entire perimeter of the building, where would the fire zone be?
Where would the, where, how would they, how would they access it?
Right. Would you have a fire zone?
We could provide, we could lose some parking, as I said, we're 85 spaces. Oh, we, we hate to lose those spaces, but the fire truck can pull up into the aisle, and you can certainly walk and run a hose in between cars. Now, I would defer that, that issue with the fire department and see if they're okay with it. If they would like to see different areas being a fire access, maybe eliminate a parking space, we would certainly apply.
As long as it's okay with the fire department, I don't think we need to lose any spots.
Yeah, I'd rather not see that.
Because the, the unit next door Essex Park, they said they had enough parking. And on any given night, you go by the golf course, there's 40 cars parked in a golf course. So, you know, we don't want to lose any spots. You guys have enough, you have more than adequate parking, and I like to see it kept that way. Because I don't want to drive by at night and see cars on, you know, the south end of the golf course. Because that'll really become a problem.
But in prior testimony, in the back portion, you're going to be giving up some spots where we're loading and refuge truck would be. So you're kind of conceding to giving up some of those parking spaces for that access, correct?
We did, if I could, we did that in response to the comments by, by the professionals for the board. That's what we did, otherwise, we would have kept.
Right. But you're giving up those spots, so it's not quite 85 oval.
No, that's, that's a 345 that we are providing versus the 260 that we're, that we are supposed to have.
We've eliminated those spots from the calculation.
What, you eliminated them before our comments?
I don't, no, it was subsequent.
We, yeah.
Yeah, subsequent testimony tonight indicated that during questions at the board, saying, how would the refuge truck come in? And they were saying that they would give up those spots along the back, those few spots where the handicap is.
No, no, whether or not.
Like five of them.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, I don't believe that the testimony is regarding, well, John, I'll let you speak, but you're sworn.
Yes. Commissioner, what I was referring to, the presentation plan that you have, showed initially parking in that area.
Right.
Now it doesn't. But, but Mr. Steiger worked off the new plan, which is all the revised, you know, comments that were both the planner as well as the engineer. And that was, you know, we have them available for the board now. But, but the, the final plan just shows loading here instead of parking.
Right.
But the total parking spaces does not change based upon what Mr. Steiger has just presented.
So it's still 345?
Correct.
And that's eliminating those, like that. That's all I have right now.
Go ahead. I have one question. Talking about with the, with the school, with the bus drop-off, cars in the morning, they double park there. So if it does become a problem, you know, at the beginning, if it's not, with your, you know, your report. But if it does become a problem, would it be an issue if they did a right turn only from 7:00 to 9:00? Or, you know, peak hours, just to eliminate those cars that are making the left when the buses are there, cars are double parked? It really gets crazy there. It's been, you know, council meetings all the time, so if just alleviating.
Right turn.
Making the right turn, eliminating a child running across the street that you don't see coming out, you know, something for that, you know, effect.
A lot of people don't, do not realize you can pass a school bus when it's parked in front of the school. Only, only other time you can, most people in the public don't even realize that. So that's what causes a lot of traffic jams too, when you could pass the school bus.
We would suggest that as the event that we go into operating. We would suggest that in the event that we go into operation, I, we can do it to the governing body if they decide, and the police department decides things, the ordinances and other things, we can do it that way. For us to agree with now, I think.
No, I agree, but I, I agree with Mr. Steiger also, people are gonna learn to realize to go in Franklin Avenue. I do agree with him there, too.
I'm parking here, I'm going out the other way.
We could readdress it. If we start getting accidents.
One at a time. Any other board members have questions to this witness? If not, does anybody in the public have a question? Chairman?
Jim Neely. So, I find this pretty interesting. Uh, you have three hundred and forty-five spots, which is well above what's required.
Jim, raise your right hand, please. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing else?
She's only asking questions, she's not sworn.
I do.
You need to swear in case it makes a statement later.
I'm curious, are they gonna be assigned parking spots?
Probably so. I think that's gonna be a parking manager plan as we proceed with the operations, if, if we need to control it. Uh, but at this point, I don't think there's a need to start assigning them, but as it's in operation, if we need to control the parking, it can be assigned. Let's say, one, one space per unit, and then the remainder could be for guests or whoever else wants to use it.
I, I find, I find the ratio very interesting. I, I guess I'd like to hear your opinion on why you think that's more than adequate. And I, and I'll give you my explanation as to why I'm just questioning that.
Well, this is a high-rise building. There is mass transit availability in and around the area, bus service. And, uh, and, and what we find in these types of developments is, is just that, they'll attract, um, I'll say, young professionals for the most part. Um, many of these people are self-employed, they, they work from their home in many cases. What we find is that actual transportation needs are very much diminished. They don't need, a, a couple doesn't need two cars typically, one car is enough. And that's, that's the standard. I, I, I know you're, I know, I, I, I get the, the facial responses. But that's what we find in, in these types of developments.
Okay.
Uh, not as, not, very unsimilar to what we saw a decade or two of what, where everybody, everybody needed their own car. You didn't have that capability, you don't need to have, you don't need that capability now to actually do what you need to do in your.
So my concern is very similar to, to what Ray said, okay, about the other apartment complex there, the new one. I own a building there as, as those D. We just fought like hell to get twenty-four spots, of which two might go away. Glad to hear you say you don't think you need that access on Carpenter Terrace. Uh, but we got twenty-four spots there. And I can tell you, I own a building for a park, for one bedroom apartments. And right now, my tenants have seven.
My objection is because it's not a question, it's a statement. And I, I don't, I don't mean to cut you off, bear with me one second. But as a lawyer, he can ask questions of a witness, you, Mr. Neely's welcome to make a statement under oath later on, but at this point in time, it's not a debate, it's a question.
That's true.
Okay, where, okay, let me, if, if, if the parking spots, if, if the number of cars that wanna go in there are going to exceed the parking spots, where do you think they're gonna park?
Objection to the hypothetical, is there nothing?
There's only one place to park.
If I can finish my statement, Mr. Neely. I'm objecting to the question, because it, it has a hypothetical that has no facts before it. So, he's asking Mr. Steiger a question that he can't answer.
It's a stain, you can ask a specific question that relates to his testimony. And then later, after the application applicant has finished presenting his application, we will eventually open it up to public comment, and you can make any comments that you'd like. So if you're to ask a specific question that relates to his testimony, we'd be happy to hear it.
Can I make, I can't make a statement?
You can, just not at this particular point in time. Okay?
I, I guess I can't ask, I asked the question I wanted to ask, and I can't ask it now. I'll ask it at a later date, but I think, I think the purpose of my statements are obvious.
I'm not sure it's a question, but I have something to say. I've been there since nineteen sixty.
Wait, I'm gonna check.
Yeah, right now, Dee, we're, we're answering questions.
The establishment is just a question of the witness, I'm not trying, I'm not trying to be disrespectful, I'm not trying to cut you off.
Yeah.
You, I, my understanding, Mr. Chairman, is open to the public.
At the end, we're gonna have.
And people can make statements that they wanna make, and subject to cross-examination.
Well, can I just give you some information?
Not a doubt, not a diss.
You can, you can, just not at this particular point in time. There's just a process and a procedure. Later. And right now, you would just ask questions. If I tell you what I know now, you may change it, and for the better. No, you can make any statement you want during public comment, it's just not right now. Okay? Okay?
The oval that's on, that's your property, or property in question, is that gonna be two-way?
Yes.
And we'd be able to go all the way Franklin Avenue around, all the way to the parking on Carpenter?
No.
I, I mean, the parking lot on Carpenter? Does it go all the way around?
Parking lot on Carpenter, on, well, you'll be able to get from Franklin Avenue into the site towards Franklin, towards Carpenter Street.
All the way over to the parking lot?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's through.
Parking lot.
All the way through.
Parking lot on our site.
Yes.
You pass in Franklin, using the outside, the southerly side of the oval, you get to the parking lot. Get to the whole site, park in any parking spot you want.
I just didn't know it went all the way through.
Yes. You can circulate around the entire site three sixty, and come back out again onto Franklin.
Anybody else in the audience? Charlie, do you have a question?
As long as the audience is standing.
No further questions, go ahead.
Mr. Steiger, I'm gonna have to come up here, because I've, I've, I'll put these, what? You said you reviewed the traffic. Perfect.
Yes.
And you said that the driveway on Carpenter is not necessary.
From my point of view, for, for access to and from the site, sufficient access, no, it's not.
But isn't it true that the only driveway they own to a public street is the Carpenter driveway?
I suppose that's correct, yes.
And because we don't have the access agreement easement documents, we don't know exactly what rights they have on those two other driveways. I don't see what here's for that part.
No, I was, I was.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize.
He was still trying to figure out how to get here.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, so, as of this moment, because we don't have those access agreement documents, we are unsure as to the applicant's rights to the driveway to Belleville and Franklin. So my concern is if we eliminate the driveway on Carpenter, we may be pigeonholing the applicant if the rights he assumes he has, he does not.
My, my, Mr. Chairman, the applicant doesn't necessarily agree with Mr. Steiger's evaluation. So the applicant has not agreed to abandon Carpenter Street.
Thank you. Uh, my, my second question. Isn't this a re- a retaining wall here?
I don't know, I have to refer to the actual site plan, I'm looking at the, um, the, um. Yes, there is a retaining wall between the two access ways.
I guess my concern is there is a stop bar here, so if I'm a driver, I apologize, my head's in the way. If, here we go, if I'm a driver stopped here, can I see over, through the trees, over the retaining wall to ensure that I don't get hit as I pull out from here?
Yeah, the drivers, uh, as long as, as long as there's three and a half feet of site distance. It's zero at the, at the, at the, uh, end of the retaining wall, and going back at least twenty feet, it's a two-foot difference between the elevation of the stop bar and the other, other areas.
So then, I guess, because the stop bar is approximately at this location, my concern is the site, because I'm looking for this car, for this car that's stopped, and then this does not have a stop, these are through.
Yeah.
I guess my concern is, is this the best design, this location, because you have sort of these odd angles?
Probably what we'll do is, we'll probably move that stop bar to the, yeah, to the end of the retaining wall, so that you'll have a merge of, of some point, but less, less traffic at that location. And I think you made a very good point, and then allow that for your site distance, that you'd be able to see all the way down to that, that all around.
So you have a better view?
Yeah, good point.
So that would be, uh, so the applicant would be open to that as a condition of the rule?
Yes, well, and we'll take, let us take a look at it.
Sure, maybe you may, maybe, we could even more so. Okay, perfect, those are my questions, thank you.
If there's no further questions in the audience, we'd like to close the public portion for tonight, and move the, for, uh, the meeting, uh, forward to the July ninth meeting.
We have one more witness.
Okay.
He's a planner, and he talks real fast. Uh, 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 if it's the board's discretion, it's fine. But we have to come back on the eighth, I don't hold.
Yeah, I think, I think.
We need to see, we need to see those final plans.
I'd like to move it. Yes, sir.
One more quick question, not a, who's responsible for picking up the garbage, sorry, town?
They have their own, it's a private, private, they have their own. Yeah, we need to see the, the new plan, so we'd like to close the, the meeting for tonight, move it to the July ninth meeting with no further notification. I see you guys back there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.